Good evening. We're going to call to order our meeting for the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 19th, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the Commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the order of the Chair. Rule call.
Merk, Lajowski?
Here.
Jagiello?
Here.
Oops.
Here.
Jaci- (laugh) Zabilla?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Nicklin?
Yeah. Mr. Jagiello, would you lend this in?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now's the time we deal with public communications, which is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this time. And I have before me a speaker's card from- from Mo.
Hi.
Welcome.
Deborah Mo, 405 El Paso. I'm here today because I have a couple of questions. I was in Coffee Roasters the other day and there were some contractors in there and my ears perked up because I'm nosy and their gripes were, and my question is, is there a rulebook for building permits? Is there a carte blanche, standard operating procedures for buildings permits? Because what they were saying is every time there's a new commissioner, a new person in charge, a new overseer, the rules change. Things are added on or whatever. And so I- I was curious, so.
That's a good question. I can understand how those questions come up. It's probably best addressed by our staff. Would you like to chime in, Kathleen?
Okay, so the building codes are updated periodically. I don't know when we had our last update, but you know, they come through the state. So we adopt whatever, you know, building code is the pertinent one, so those are done periodically. So rules do change in the state. I think that as far as the building permit process, the city was pretty proactive and developed this building appeals board. And that's kind of the avenue now that, I think that's been in place now, what, maybe a whole year now, Sherri? And the purpose for that was to give contractors and architects and engineers an avenue to be able to- an appeal decision done by the building official, whether it's code interpretation or something of that nature. So there is some subjectivity to the building code because obviously it can be interpreted. But having said that, you know, the rules in the state of California are always getting more difficult.
Right.
They don't ever seem to go easier here in our state. There's more environmental rules. Building codes have become much more stringent than they were before, so I can understand how they feel. But the city does try to implement things consistently and so there shouldn't be. I know that's the perception is it is different.
Yes, it is.
But we try very hard to be very consistent and we have put in place these processes by where someone really truly had felt that they were wrong. They have an avenue to go and get a different, you know, like the appeals board is five members. So they could actually, the forms are available there and you can get them from Sherri. And so with that, I just, I think there's probably some truth to that, you know, because, you know, there's always an impress- when a new person comes in, like for instance, when I came in, you know, I have my way of doing things and-
Exactly.
So there probably is a little bit of that, but we try very hard to not, not, to make that very, to make, you know, smooth out the ripples and not make it-
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if, you know, was carte blanche for residential and then something else for commercial?
Right, there is.
I mean, there kind of has to be, I realize that, but-
There is.
If it's the same for everybody.
But I think, you know, generally speaking, if someone's been in construction for a really long period of time, they're going to feel that things are constantly changing because the rules are much more stringent. The number of things you have to do, whether it's 50% of your waste needs to be diverted or asbestos testing, or you probably can think of some things too, Sherri, all those things are things that they didn't have to do 20 years ago. So, you know, their impression is valid. It's just that it, that everyone has to do that within the state. It's not just in Ojai. So I think that's, wouldn't you agree, Sherri? I think most of the things that, that most people complain about are things that our state mandated and we are required to do and just over time, there's, there's a lot of things contractors need to do nowadays.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that'd like to come up and speak at this time? No, I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to our consent item list. The consent calendar is approved by a rule call vote on one motion. Should any member of the Commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. And the, the single item on tonight's consent item is the minutes from our last regular meeting, Planning Commission, November 5th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, November 5th, 2014.
I'll second it. Rule call.
Lajowski?
Aye.
Jagiello?
Aye.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Abstain. Okay. Now's the time we have our disclosure of site visits and expertise contacts. Start with Mr. Lajowski.
I have eaten at the previous incarnation of the restaurant in question a number of times, but beyond that, I have no contact with any of the applicants or the projects.
I made my rounds today and met both of the applicants and got a tour of both of their projects.
I've visited both sites and have had no expertise conversations.
I've been on both sites at one time or another.
And I too have been on both sites, but did not have any conversation or meetings with the applicants.
And I've been on both sites and no expertise contacts.
Very good then. The next topic is our municipal advisory council Planning Commission Liaison Report. There was no report for November since they didn't have a meeting. And it's, the next meeting's scheduled for December 15th and I see my name's down there to attend that, so until I hear different, that's what's going on there. Let's move into the public hearing items at this point in time. The first item is a conditional use permit, CUP 140-3, and design review permit, DRP 1407, to modify existing CUP 87-07 for a new separate two-story building at the rear Mountain Vista Manor, an existing boarding care facility for the elderly located at 602 East Oak Street. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you. Okay, tonight before you, as you stated, is a condition use permit and design review permit to modify an existing condition use permit for the Mountain Vista Manor on Oak Street. I'm going to read in to, give you a little brief project description. The project proposes to add a second 4,261 square foot, two-story residential building to an existing residential care facility within the northern undeveloped portion of the property. The proposed building will have a maximum height of 25 feet and the lower floor includes 10 new bedrooms, a dining room, kitchen laundry, TV room, sitting room, office, and six shared full bathrooms and storage. The upper floor includes two new residential apartments for nursing home staff and their families. Each residence proposed will have three bedrooms, two baths, a kitchen, and a living room. So what that kind of gives you the overall view of what we're asking, what they're asking to build and construct. In addition to that, there would be some site improvements of a total of 12 additional vehicle parking spaces would be added along the rear portion of the project site, adjacent to the two-story residential building, including six uncovered, two 88 accessible spaces, and four reserved spaces located in a garage. An additional 9,008 square feet of hardscape would be added in the form of a new driveway, parking areas, walking paths, bringing the total on-site to 16,994 square feet. In addition, additional 1,674 square feet of landscaping would be established. And this would bring for a total of 7,199 square feet of landscaping. So with that, I'd just like to point out that this is another one of those situations where the project is zoned R2 and the residential care facility is not expressly permitted or conditionally permitted in that zone district. So how this was established was the original CUP 8707 allowed based on a determination of similar use and it requires a finding that to make the determination that the proposed use is, is not detrimental or to the general welfare and is in keeping with the R2 zone district. And I think we've had similar discussions on this and where this has been done historically in the city of Ojai. When something isn't expressly permitted or conditionally permitted, this is the avenue where someone can get something in. So with that said, we'd just like to point out that, that comparing the two, you would compare multifamily dwelling and the density of up to eight units per acre. Of course, this is three quarters of an acre site, so you would take that and really compare the impacts of that many residential units and that number of people on the side with the impacts that this facility would be creating and then make a determination whether this is similar, less than, or more, a more intense use. And so in order to grant a modification to the CUP, you'd have to be making the finding tonight that it's, that it's similar to and not more intense. And so with that, I think that the applicant provided you with a shade study, which we'll be seeing now as because that's all becoming effective in January 1st. And in order to not be subject to it, you would have to have all your building permits pulled by January 1st. It's another one of those, you know, when we talked about the ordinance with the height, this is coming down. So I think it's good for us to just kind of get used to how they are and looking at them. Also, in the staff report, it talks about the design review requirements and I believe you're all familiar with these and as far as the context, continuity, scale, mass, the general plan compatibility of this project. And if there's any questions, I can answer those, but I won't go into them in detail. And then the zoning consistency, the staff report provides you with a matrix to show that this project is consistent in meeting all the required setbacks and lot coverage, et cetera. Parking and also with the, that this is deemed to be exempt on category three of CEQA, which includes limited number of new small facilities or structures and applies to up to four commercial buildings not exceeding 10,000 square feet. So with that, I guess I'm open to any questions. Like I said, oh, I just wanted to point out too that as part of the, as part of the staff report and additional information that was given to you, there was, the applicant provided and it's in the back of your packet, the traffic report, which states the, the actual hours the employers are coming in and when they're, the additional staffing, I think this was, I contacted the applicant and got this as additional information for you, that the number of employees are seven current employees and their shifts are from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM and then from 11:30 to 8:00 PM, 4:00 to 12:00 and 12:00 to 8:00. This information was provided with the additional, with the expansion, there's five additional employees to provide coverage and so that would mean the shift's times stay the same, there would be two more employees per shift. And this information was provided so that you can make a determination about the increase in traffic, you know, for this project and, and to demonstrate that it's off-peak hours because of all the concerns about bringing people in, the additional traffic and what's caused, you know, this project versus what would could be there in a R2 district. And so with that said, I guess I'm, I'm open to any questions you may have regarding the information that's provided in the staff report.
Any questions from the Commissioners, staff?
Kathleen, is the, the restrictions on the second floor residential, is that going to come in the form of a deed restriction or is that just part of the CUP conditions? That they're limited to staff?
I think it's in a, I just want to make sure before, I'm just going to look and see, I think it's, there's a condition in here.
It's number four.
Okay, yes, then yes, it is. There is one. So would, ask your question again, I'm sorry.
Is it, is it going to be in the form of a deed restriction or?
Oh, well, we didn't, you could, you could ask for it to be that way. We didn't present it that way. We just had a condition of approval and then obviously put down there as we talked about, I think we did in a previous, previous project, we put down that, you know, at such time the staff, we say we got a complaint, we said they're renting those out, that they would have to demonstrate to us that they're associated with the business. So-
Complaint driven is kind of the-
That's kind of how we did it the last time. I think you could do a deed restriction. I, I mean, obviously the intent is to, you know, the project's being approved based on the reduction of impacts, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe a deed restriction is, is more appropriate, but it kind of just depends on how, how you folks want to do it. I guess I should also say, I guess I, some, I, I think I, I added a paragraph into the staff report and I see that it didn't get into this report and I apologize for that, but I did give you an analysis of the comparison to the R2 and the, the facility and because I had talked to the applicant about it and so in the, in the general, the general plan provides for, it's 18, I think it's 18.5 people for the, per acre in the medium-high density zone district, which this is what it is, which would be 18 people. And so I might have looked a little bit forlorn when I was, because I was looking for that paragraph in here, but, and so of course you'd have 75% of 18.5, which would be, you know, less than. So you're comparing really at this point, 10 client, they're, they're adding 10 additional clients, I believe they probably have 10, you might want to ask them at this point. That's 20 people that are clients, but you know, obviously they're not the type of, of client they are, they're, it's recognized in the industry that when you're even active seniors have reduced impacts to police, parks, traffic. So with them being in a facility like this, we would, we would, it would be standard that you would acknowledge that there's less impacts to that. And then you would have the 12 employees. So you're somewhat upwards of, you know, 32 people associated with this use, of course, not on, on-site at the same time because they're telling you two employees per shift, but you do have two families living there. So kind of what we would be talking about is around six, what is it, let's see, nine, three, probably 15 people versus, you know, 32. So when you're making this analysis between an R2 use and a facility, you would be looking at, you know, do, I think she says six units, so you would have six units, dwelling units and the families associated with six units compared to this facility. Or somewhere's of about 15 to 16 people versus the 32 that are associated. I wasn't sure how many people were actually currently clients that they have there, how many beds they currently have, because I didn't find that in the, in the information. So you might want to ask them, but obviously we're not comparing apples to apples. So I would just suggest that you have a little dialogue on that.
Any other questions for staff at this point? We'd like to hear from the applicant then. Please come up and introduce yourself and-
Thank you Commissioners, my name is Ben Turner representing Nikki and Sabina. I live in Ojai, actually just around the corner from the facility. I was going to ask, answer a couple of questions, make a couple of points about your comments. The residential use above is for staff. My clients don't have any objection how you want to condition it because it takes a lot of money and time to get here. They don't intend to jeopardize that by breaking any of your conditions that you apply, so however you do it for the life of the CUP makes no difference to them. The residential use is destined to be occupied by them and their family. Their adult children actually work at the facility, so they would take one unit for themselves and one unit would be for their adult children. So they currently live in Fillmore, so I know you're discussing trips. Practical, practicality is that they're going to be actually reducing the number of trips because they won't be driving in. And a lot of their staff do actually live in Ojai. So although I had to prepare the document for the Director to state that, you know, that the trips are off-peak hours, in actual fact, many live so close that they walk. So just please bear that in mind as well. I'm not a gifted public speaker, so I've prepared some notes that I'd like to share with you. If I don't make eye contact the whole time, it's just nerves. So thank you for taking the time to review it and also thank you for visiting the site because many of my projects, the Commissioners don't do that, so I do appreciate that. The care facility expansion that we're presenting today has been designed to meet a need in Ojai. Caring for the elderly is a responsibility that Mountain Vista Manor has been providing for Ojai's elderly since 1988. And we are submitting for this modification to the existing CUP to allow them to expand to answer a growing need in our community. The future only holds a growing number of men and women who need assistance and care and who deserve to continue to live in a home-like setting in the city that they have called home. These residents have included our teachers, firefighters, and others who have contributed to Ojai's community. The staff at Mountain Vista Manor have had to turn many people away because their current facility is at capacity and there remains a waiting list to this day. As well as the expansion to the facilities for the elderly, there are two upper-floor residential units that are being conditioned by permit for staff and their families only. We believe this will reduce staff trips and allow backup staff to be available to answer any needs of the residents and to support the other staff. Subsequent to our last presentation to you, we have altered the building and site to incorporate the suggestions and mitigate the concerns we heard at the concept review. The building itself has been stepped on all sides to break up any large expansive wall. There have been additional roof elements added to add visual interest and reduce any single areas of roof that were too expansive. It's worth pointing out to everyone that during the design of this facility, Nikki and Sabina have been constantly involved with the layout and planning as they strive to create a home that provides appropriate care and pleasant atmosphere to the residents. The floor plan itself was designed around the fact that residents like to walk the facility. For those residents that can, walking inside the facility is the only exercise they can partake in on a daily basis. For those residents who will be able to enjoy a short stroll outside, we have had to temper our choice of materials with the knowledge that many surfaces that will be no hurdle to able-bodied persons do provide challenges to the residents. The pathways surrounding and leading to the facility were redesigned to be less linear, angular, which also allowed us to add seating areas off the pathways for residents to rest and relax outside. The pathways will be of colored concrete as depicted on the color sheet in an effort to maintain complementary aesthetics to the grounds, but will remain smooth and without steps. A landscape design has been included with increased plantings and more trees at the front, as well as more landscaped area and trees at the rear parking areas. We have also added required cover parking and bicycle parking at the rear of the facility. I'm tasked with representing many clients in CUP submittals in the tri-county area. There are always dissenters, letters submitted with objections and accusations. It's a refreshing change for me, representing Nikki and Sabina. Over the years that Mountain Vista has been operating, they have shown that they are good neighbors. There have been no complaints about them. When I visit to review plans or take measurements, I see that they care for the residents like family, decorating for holidays and celebrating. It really feels like a home when you walk in there. And I hope that we have met the goals you set for us and will try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Staff or Commissioners? No? Thank you.
Oh, wait, actually, sorry, I had to find my notes. I did have a couple of questions. It looks like, like the driveway, is the driveway all solid asphalt, full length?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a small portion of concrete on one side.
Right. You know, and I actually reviewed our notes from the last time you presented and I do remember us indicating that we'd like to see permeable paving or permeable concrete, if possible, used in that area for stormwater catchment. So I don't know, that's something I didn't see that was changed and, or added to the new submittal. So that would be something I'd, I'd like to see you explore. Let me see if there was anything else. Oh, and the other question I had was on the west side. If I'm looking at the elevation correctly, you actually have a balcony, but, but it looks like it's a solid wall. Is that correct? In other words, the wall from the lower story comes up and provides the balcony edge?
What elevation's that?
That would be the west elevation. Am I reading that right? That's attachment eight of 12. Excuse me, attachment C, page eight of 12.
And what's your question?
Well, I was just trying to understand if that's a balcony right here and this is just a, rather than a railing, the actual wall itself, almost like a parapet type.
So there is a, there is on A2.2, I don't have the references, but-
Okay.
There is an upper deck on that side, on the west side, or I guess, I guess you could call it an uncovered patio.
Mm-hmm.
So you walk out, you wouldn't see that instead of a railing-
Exactly.
I just took the wall up to the 42 inches with a cap on the top.
Okay.
Just for really, just-
More for privacy and-
Yeah, just for privacy, yeah, and cleaning things up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly. And that's what I thought.
Can I ask a question? On the permeable paving, was that on the existing driveway all the way up from the street? Was that what you were thinking about?
Well, I know, you know, I reviewed our notes and I remembered from the last presentation that we had brought that up as something we'd like to see and then I reviewed the new one. So I understand cost is an issue, as it always is with, you know, all projects, but maybe the possibility where the, where the parking is or a portion of the driveway.
You know, I think that it would be a good-
Something to explore.
Something to explore, but also probably better for the client to be able to keep, obviously, the boundaries of the building and the grounds that we're working on towards the back is going to be removed at the moment. It's just a mishmash of different materials.
Right.
That area certainly, because it's going to have to be something, it's going to be put down.
Exactly.
Why not, why not put something permeable? We actually just contracted with a civil engineer to prepare-
Oh, good, okay.
The stormwater pollution plans and the squimp and everything else. So I'm guessing that she's going to have her own additional requirements over the landscape that we've added for, for filtration and cleaning.
Good, thank you.
So I'll, I'll take a look at that.
So when you're looking at the rear property line, that north westerly line, it, it looks not on your plan, but it looks clipped visually, like there's a fence clipping across that. What's, what's the deal with that?
Good question. I, I-
I was wondering about that.
I, I, we're getting the surveyor out there to find out, but I maybe probably asked Nikki, she knows a little bit more, but I think that that corner isn't ours.
Is yours?
Is not.
Oh, it's not yours.
Ours. But can I defer to Nikki? Do you? No.
Oh, it's, has a-
I draw, I draw boundaries, obviously I use the aerial images and I use them to meet some bounds of the legal description. So I know that the building, because we've used the old records of survey, I know that the building fits and the setbacks work.
Mm-hmm.
But I've got a feeling that that corner, that if you took the line from that inner corner and cutting across, that probably is not our property.
Okay.
So I think-
That would need to be reflected in the plans if that's so.
Yeah, certainly, yeah. We're not going to be building on anybody else's property for, for sure.
Right.
And if anything, if, if I'm correct and that isn't our property, then that's, if anything, an additional buffer between us and, and the neighbors behind.
Okay, thanks. Excuse us, folks, we're trying to conduct a meeting, so if you could-
Would you still be able to meet your parking requirements if, if-
Yeah, everything fits in, so the boundary-
Even if that-
Yeah, everything fits within, the bound, the boundary's real, but I've drawn.
Okay, and the fencing is just a whole nother-
And that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or, or the owners, how many residents are in that front existing building?
Right now?
Yeah, would you please come forward and tell us who you are? (laugh)
Hi, I'm Nikki Perez and I'm the owner, and we have fifteen residents. We're licensed for fifteen and we're holding fifteen.
And are you proposing ten additional residents for a total of twenty-five, or are you gonna?
I can't, I'm proposing ten bedrooms, but I can't tell you the amount of residents, that's up to state licensing and the fire department. They will give me the number that I can have.
Okay.
Just sort of-
Yeah, that's interesting.
To clarify that a little bit, the occupancy that we're aiming for, that we actually did an occupancy plan that was submitted, is actually a very, very restrictive one, because there are different categories. It's not just ambulatory and non-ambulatory residents. There's a category above, that is actually written about in a building code, that is for people that can't even turn over in bed. So the fire department, based upon the occupancy, can actually say, you can only have six people here. It's based upon the fire resistance of the building, the number of exits, and everything else. It's actually, the review that we're gonna have to go through, other than building the safety here, is actually more restrictive than the CBC's usual rules. I have to take this set of plans to the state, and actually gets reviewed, they're actually licensed through the state and the fire department, so-
Is there an estimated maximum?
Again, we don't know until we submit-
Is there an estimated, do you have, I mean?
My current building holds fifteen. That's my maximum. So the fire marshal says I can have five non-ambulatory, five bed-bound, and five ambulatory. So they're broken down, and it's up to licensing and the fire marshal what I can have, and how many of each. So I can tell you my current building holds fifteen.
Is that based on, like, say, a square, I mean, obviously they're basing it on something, is it square footage? Or, you know, each bedroom, based on the square footage, can have so many beds? Or you, is it, what's the criteria, is there some criteria that they're using?
The maximum amount of persons per room is two, period.
So potentially, you're not sure at this point, but you're hoping that you could possibly have two per room?
That would be the maximum that I-
Could handle.
They could handle, that licensing would allow.
That would allow, okay, and then, so it sounds, if I'm getting this correct, that, that'll be the maximum, it potentially could be less depending on what the fire department says and what have you. So at least we would have an idea of the maximum amount, is that fair to say, or, at this point?
Say.
Okay, so that would be an additional, how many more, in addition to your fifteen?
There's ten rooms being proposed.
Ten rooms, so then another twenty potential, okay.
Talking, a potential thirty-five-
Total.
Residents.
Yeah.
Plus, obviously employees.
Obviously, when you keep in mind that as, as a maximum, if you've gotta have a number, keep in mind, from what I've understood so far, my conversations with individuals at the state, it's likely to be less because the size of the rooms and the sort of equipment and beds, and access to the beds, with people that can't even turn over in their bed, the fire department's gonna say, or the state's gonna say, it's gonna be less than that. But if you have to look at maximums, yeah.
Which would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for applicants?
Yes, I have a question. I read in the January fifteen minutes, there was some discussion about a potential reduction in the number of parking spaces. I'm wondering if that was incorporated in these current plans?
We actually did drop one parking space from our original proposal, and we put two areas with new trees into the back, and we also put a little area for bicycle parking as well.
Thank you.
Please.
I know there's nothing here, but is there any plan to bring the existing structure into balance with this new structure?
Nikki had spoken to me about what they could do that would be cost-effective to bring particularly the street view into some sort of, so we've got a consistent theme on the property. So that was one of the reasons that we've chosen a sort of a craftsman style, a rock wainscote, and simple window trim, and a good choice of historic colors can do a lot to an existing building pretty reasonably priced. So that would be the long-term plan, was to bring the front up to match the back.
But, but when you say long-term plan, you mean not at the same time that you would be doing this project?
It probably wouldn't be at the same time as construction. I guess it depends upon budget.
We would like to see the, the building in the back completed first, and then start doing some reconstruction of the front to make it match, because I don't wanna have both going at the same time, and, and that would cause, I think, too much stress for my residents that I have now. Just, it's just too much. So I'd rather have one project going and it's completed, and then start the other. But I definitely want them to match.
Can we make this as part of the approval, that they upgrade the front?
Oh yes, it's a design review permit, so yes, that's one of the findings that I, that I-
So it's in there?
Well, no, but it's one of the considerations that, when I read in Mass, I think, let me see. So when you do your design review on page four of six, it talks about that the Commission should consider the project's consistency with fundamental urban design principles, including context, continuity, scale, and mass. So you're totally within your discretionary powers to say, you know, you know, we want this to be conditioned so that there's continuity and consistency between both buildings. So you just have to add a condition, and you could, you know, yeah, you can give her, I mean, I think that what she's asking her is totally reasonable. I mean, obviously, that, you know, there's just so much a person can handle continuing a business on-site and then doing construction. So, you'd have to craft a condition that would give her a little bit of wiggle room there to complete that.
What do you think is the appropriate amount of time that you would do the remodel on the front building?
I think if it was limited to items that were, that weren't structural, so if it was, you know-
The facade.
The low wainscote, the window trim, and repainting and cleaning and caulking and tidying up that way, I think that sort of six months after completion of, of the, six months after completion would be reasonable. I just wanted to add a couple of other things that popped into my head on the aesthetics. It mentions in the report that it was wood on the outside of the building. It's actually wood textured. It's actually a hardy plank product, I think you probably all sort of know, just because of the fire department restrictions that we have here.
So, when we're talking about the cosmetics of the upgrading the existing residence, we're talking about using the same materials that you are using on the proposed residence? Okay.
That would require a design review-
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say-
So maybe they could say they would be willing to let it be a director's exemption?
No, I was gonna say that, actually, I was gonna say that, you know, if you're gonna make a condition of this, I was actually gonna go a different way, I was gonna say, I guess we'd have to look at how this was noticed, but if you're gonna make this condition of approval, a condition of part of this design review permit, I was just gonna ask that you be very specific to avoid her having to come back before you again and say, this, the existing building shall, blah, 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 so that, you know, you're giving her sort of the quasi, or giving her the entitlement now, and not make it so she had to come back through because, you know, and she's, I mean, you're talking about trying to save her money and then-
That's easily done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Good suggestion, yeah.
Please and thank you.
I have a question. The residents, they, they can get outside of the facility and walk around and-
Yeah.
Mobile?
Yeah, the, the doors, the doors have to be panic hardware on the doors, and they're just allowed to have an alarm to indicate to staff if there's anybody who's left from one of the emergency exit doors, which are in every bedroom. But they can, in fact, we, like we said, we did design the facility so that they could, Nikki says they do their laps, you know, they kind of walk around in a loop to try and get their day exercises. So they can get out on their own, but they, but the staff know about it when they do.
What I was leading to is in the outside, and, you know, I think we talked about it the last one, was having an area where, you know, if they have visitors, they can go outside in the summertime, and like a gazebo area or something, where people could sit and-
Yeah, we sort of carved out little areas among the planters where we could put benches on, on the, on the planet, shows that. I spoke to Nikki about, you know, some of the suggestions from last time around about trying to make areas that, you know, I was thinking about tables, you know, on the lawn, and found out that even grass is impossible for most of the residents to walk upon. Everything has to be, even though it's not maybe the best choice aesthetically, has to be smooth. So concrete tends to be the best, but we just pulled out of, of those little areas and made little islands of planters so they could sort of be away from, you know, the building and away from everybody else, and still have a little area, but they're still very, sort of a very short walking distance away from the exit of the building.
Okay, thank you. I just, just tagging on to that, Ben, I know last time, I was the one who brought up this outdoor communal area, and with so many residents there, with the potential for so many residents, I'm just, it appears to me, there's, there's a, there's a need for a designated area, possibly a shade structure, we do live in Ojai, and I'm not seeing anything like that here, where if a family comes to visit, or, you know, whatever the occasion may be, they have a place where they can congregate outside and sit at a table and be protected from the sun. I see, I think the benches are a great idea, I like the way you've meandered the paths and all that, and it has the potential for being a pretty, pretty nice. But I just wanted to put that out here at this time.
I'm just speaking quickly to Nikki there. The existing facility outside, it would be on the east side, where the lawn area is, there's an existing- So there's an, actually, there's an existing patio out front of the building near the street, but then behind on the side there on the lawn, there's an existing patio that we'd be willing to put a trelis up if that was the wish of the Commission.
That, that's adjacent to the-
Existing facility, yeah.
And what is approximate dimensions of that? Just a range? You think it's twelve by twenty, or? But probably sufficient for a table and-
We're estimating twenty by fifteen, but we're honestly, we're guessing.
Yeah, I mean, that gives us, that just gives me an idea. But there's no shade structure over it, correct? It's just a poured slab?
Yes, yeah. And we were gonna be, obviously, these new paths on the lawn, we're gonna be tying in and sort of resurfacing the areas there. So at the same time, if you, if you thought that that was, you know, the wish of the Commission, trelis is okay by us.
Right, I think that's a kind of a no-brainer, almost.
We currently use patio tables with big umbrellas, but I-
Okay.
Definitely understand-
Something a little more permanent, and, and are there doors coming off the existing residence into that area?
Straight into that area from sliding doors.
Okay, great. Any more questions for the applicant?
Well, I have a question maybe for staff. Is this project subject to the public art? No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to hear, anyone who would have any comment from the, from the audience out there, would like to come forward and speak on the project at this point in time? Feel free, state your name and-
Deborah Mo, Ojai. I'm a licensed caregiver. Twenty-five years in Ojai. As the boomers boom, there's no room at the inn. There's waiting lists all over town. I'm familiar with Nikki and Sabino, some of, a lot of Ojai's, well, there's a lot of people that have been to their facility, and I think if you go in that facility, you will see the kind and loving place that it is. She cooks from scratch. The, there's been no turnover in years, and I think it's great. They're offering a place for employees or family to live on the property. And when I heard about the, the maximum amount of twenty, if there's ten bedrooms, I don't think that's always the case, because in this facility, some of the rooms are private. Some people don't wanna share a room, so I think there's that option too. But I think it's a need here in Ojai. I mean, there's waiting lists, all, at the Gables, at Lost Robles, I mean, all over. So, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the subject? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I think at this point, we'll open it up for discussion with the Commission. Oh, right, no vote, right? We will officially close the public hearing then. Fellow Commissioners, Mac, you wanna chime in?
Seems to be a lot of, seems to be a lot of conditions we've, or potential conditions that we're considering attaching to this. I'm wondering if the fellow Commissioners think this might be something we should discuss and possibly table, rather than, in giving them the opportunity to potentially make further revisions? Or I don't know, I'm just curious-
Personally, I don't, I, I see those conditions, there's three that I can see right now. Steve brought up the shade structure, we got permeable pavers. I don't think any of those conditions, we got a possible deed restriction in the, in the front facade. So I think all those things are very easily described myself personally, and I wouldn't see the reason to hold them up for those types of things.
Well, one, one issue I agree strongly with Commissioner Nolan about the impervious area. I did some quick calculations somewhere in here. And it looks like there's gonna be, it looks like the total hardscape I get is gonna constitute forty-two percent of the lot, which seems like an awful lot of, of hardscape. Particularly in a time when, I know you mentioned that the civil engineers will be working on their, the sweeps or the whatever other incarnation. I would like to set, though, personally, I'd like to probably set a benchmark as a condition. I don't know if the Commissioners have a percentage, or if we should go by lead for new construction. Is that a guideline, but that's my main concern personally. Everything else looks very good.
I think a strong consideration is the type of facility it is, it's elderly, and that's why we have a large hardscape area. So, you know, if it wasn't that kind of facility, then that would be an argument, yes.
So regarding the, what, what would the lead numbers be at this point? So for instance, they have an existing asphalt driveway, you know, on that, the front portion, okay. Would it be including all of the new driveway and the parking, for instance? In other words, the entire drivable, parkable space? Or then, or the other option is, do we come up with a number that we feel is for whatever reason?
This is an interesting one because of the type of facility it is, and we're gonna put a restriction on them that's going to work against what they're trying to do. I'm not, I mean, in, in an ideal world, it would be nice to have permeable pavers, we all know that. We're all trying to do that, but we also know that cost-wise and practical-wise, that many people aren't able to do it, so- What would be the alternatives to paved, paved pavers? Permeable pavers, yeah. There are, for permeable- I mean, you'd have to go gravel or something like that.
Yeah, we don't want the gravel, but porous concrete.
Permeable concrete?
Yeah, porous concrete.
You know?
Porous, yeah.
Whatever you call it, I mean-
I think there is permeable concrete.
There is, yeah.
It is, have you seen it?
Yeah, we have it all up north and from-
Yeah, okay.
So. Not attractive.
It's not very, it's not attractive at all.
I think we have to weigh this.
And it also, maintenance-wise, it breaks, it breaks apart.
Yeah.
And it has to be vacuumed periodically, which is high maintenance. Yeah, so I, I think.
This is a commercial facility where there's more traffic going in and out of it. And something, whatever they do there has to be more stable, I think.
Exactly. And I'd like to see, as proposed something, but at the same time, I'm very conscious of who is there, the user, and then also the cost. I mean, we have to, I think we have to throw all of that into the mix.
Well, listen, one of the driving motivations for the permeable, uh, whatever we use, concrete pavers, is to keep the water on the property, right? I mean, that's, that's the environmental sustainability factor we're looking at. What about this idea where, uh, it was mentioned that they're gonna come up with a civil plan, creating some sort of rain garden? Where we could, or bioswale, if you will, that takes that and keeps that water on the property. So it, it still functions with the hardscape. Then we've, uh, then we've met the criteria we're trying to, you know, trying to achieve here.
I think the challenge, because I'm, I'm always for, you know, um, bioswales or something similar, a rain garden, is where would it go? Because we realize you've gotta drive all the way back to get to the park, getting into the, it looks like a trash enclosure, I'm guessing.
We have the Fox Canyon Baranca over there, um, that whole stretch along the edge there.
Well, I guess that's the other thing they could pitch.
We can pitch it in that direction.
Well, once it goes to the Baranca, it's lost, right?
There's also a large planter that runs parallel to the, between the Baranca and the proposed driveway and the existing driveway. I don't know if anyone saw it, it has the oleanders with oleander scorch. So there is a planter there, so potentially that could almost suffice as a rainwater catchment, bioswale.
Yeah, and it stays relatively on the property within the reason.
Keep it on the property. I think that's, if they, if we can express that to the applicants so they understand what our intentions are here. That's what we're trying to drive at. We're open for your suggestions, but I think we would have to, uh, it might be difficult to condition without seeing it. I don't know, we should probably discuss that one. You have ideas?
I mean, I did go out and look at it, um, and there is a, um, a planter that runs the full length on the east side of the property between the driveway and the, um, and proposed driveway and the Baranca. There is a hedge, I'm sure you're aware that slowly the oleander is dying off. That's a disease called oleander scorch and you can't really control it. So you're probably gonna have to replace that anyway and replant it, just heads up right now. But that could be an ideal and a cost-effective way to capture the stormwater.
Absolutely.
Keep it on site, you know, pitch the driveway towards that plan or whether it's a bioswale or a modified, something similar. That would be feasible.
Yeah, probably just simply a rain garden.
Yeah, well, a long rain garden along the whole length of the, it's kind of a bioswale rain garden.
And they have a specific design for their drainage too with.
Yeah, and that way, that way the water stays on the property and they don't have to be restricted on the pavers.
Exactly.
Question for staff. Do you see us being able to condition that in, uh, with language versus having a drawing in front of us to approve?
So I think if you're gonna go the route of, uh, allowing them to have their discretion on how they meet this condition and if the condition is just retain all water on site. Or with a, then I think you need to look at condition number eleven, page five of eight, which says the bill, the applicant's building supplemental shall include a drainage study and report with calculations demonstrating compliance with the city drainage standards and master plan. No increase in crosslot drainage without stormwater except in document, documents from affected properties. Any proposed drainage affecting the flood control easement requires a V C W P D S review and approval. Seems to me like that's the one you need to rewrite, if you feel that you can, right?
Where is that?
Page five of eight.
Five of eight on the top, number eleven. I think that if you're not gonna give him a broad-based condition and allow him to meet it however he wants to meet it, that, then you probably should let, continue the item and let him research the pros and cons of permeables and what they can and cannot do. And I only say that, I know you don't wanna condition it, I don't wanna continue it tonight, but, but the only issue is that if you give them a condition they can't meet or is cost prohibitive, we'd have to notice them and bring them back anyway and it'd cost them more money. So, so either, um, I'm just cautioning, either do something that you know they can achieve, like, you know, a broad-based condition that allows them the flexibility to do something to meet, or let them come back to you with whether it's really feasible or not. Because at this point, I, I, you know, I, I don't know that, um, you know, given the parameters of how they've explained to you the type of use that's there and, and how it really, um, you know, functions with the hardscape, I, I don't know. But I think the condition you're proposing is, is doable, if you just give them flexibility.
One quick question, um, the, a number eleven that we just looked at. It refers to, um, okay, the building supplemental shall include a drainage study and report with calculations demonstrating compliance with city drainage standards and master plan. Well, we don't have the, and I don't know what they are exactly, the city drainage standards. But do they include what we were just, um, discussing?
No, I think.
So we need to be a little more specific then.
No, I, I think you need to say that, cause this, this is obviously giving them the ability to, to affect other properties, you know? I, I mean, this is broadly worded without any real bent toward or direction towards anything green or rain garden. I think you're, you're gonna write, you're gonna rewrite that condition and say, you know, she'll include a drainage study and report with calculations demonstrating that they can retain all their stormwater on site.
Or retain as much as possible. See, that's, I don't think you have to get that restricted.
I would agree with.
And I know you have to define it because possible is broad.
Possible is not enforceable.
Yes, I understand.
They will come and say zero is impossible. I mean, not everybody, but you know, it, it, you have to give me some parameters, yeah.
And I think ultimately you could come back to our director for, uh, uh, approval.
Right, can we, is there, can we, can you have discretion and, uh, could there be a director's exemption, you know, to that?
Yeah, you could say to, subject to the approval of the, of the committee of health and director, sure. And I think that, um, that, uh, most people are trying to do something that's more green. I think everyone's trying within what is practical on their site. But, um, obviously you wanna add something in that says they're gonna retain on site.
Okay, so, take notes, guys. Rosalie, go ahead.
Oh, well, I mean, I, I, I believe this applicant's been here back and forth a number of times. And I'm, I feel like, it seems we've sort of drilled down on, um, specific conditions that I think we can language today and, um, put this through.
Yeah, and I wanna talk a little bit about the, um, occupancy and the amount of, um, the difference between having a six-unit condominium versus a facility like this. Uh, I think it's pretty obvious to me that the impact is less with this type of facility than it would be with a six-unit condo with families. People there rarely drive, um, and, uh, so I don't think you're gonna have them driving around too much, so the traffic is limited. You have the owners moving to the site and living there, so that reduces that significantly, their traffic. So that's my opinion on that. I, I don't think there's an issue there.
Hey, Kathy?
I was gonna say, I was thinking the same thing too. You know, less, it's gonna be less traffic, um, less vehicle miles traveled and, so I'm in agreement.
And I think also, you know, we talked about the number of people there, but there was a mention about people sharing and not sharing, you know? So it won't necessarily be, what did we work out, thirty-five possible residents, but possibly not that much, actually.
Right.
Right, I think initially we were asked by staff to consider the context of this project within its neighborhood. And, uh, these points are all well-taken and, uh, and, uh, it's rather, um, a negative impact. You know, when it's all said and done with, uh, this type of use. So, I, I really think it's a great project. Uh, I think, Ben, you've done a great job. You listened to us, uh, you know, there's always, uh, you're not, there's a few things that need to be addressed, but I think you, you, you can express that to you and you can handle that. You know, you took into consideration the solar, uh, you stepped back the building. It's a, it's a, it's a smart-looking building for what it is. It's, you know, it's an institution, you know? And to, to make a big box look decent, it, it takes something, but you can do that and I think you've succeeded with that. I think it's important that we, uh, phase in that front residence aesthetically to make it look, address it as in the same vernacular that you have in the rear. Uh, and tie it together with the landscape, the shade structure and that sort of thing. But all in all, it's, I think the, the use of it is, uh, is badly sorely needed. And from what I'm hearing, you, you guys do a great job with the people in the community. And, uh, we're, we're certainly appreciative of that and the needs there. So, um, would someone like to motion this? Why not? Or further questions?
Yeah, just further discussion. I just, um, I might like to see, it looks like there's a large heat island over in the new parking lot. Uh, is there any way potentially to condition a few more trees? I don't wanna.
That might be a good question for our landscape commissioners. Not to put you on the hot seat here, but.
So just to be clear, the large rectangle, which would be on the north property line, almost in the center, is that, um?
A garage.
That's a garage. Okay. Oh, that's right. For some reason I didn't see the label on there. I might've just missed it. I apologize if I didn't. Okay, so that's the garage. Well, um, you know where there's an opportunity to possibly get some more trees, although it's not exactly in that parking area? But it would be, yeah, next to the garage, there's a small triangular cutout. But then also, if they end up doing, um, you know, a rain garden, bioswale, and knowing that your oleander hedge unfortunately is going downhill, that could be an opportunity too for some trees on the property.
If you can turn to page, um, eleven of twelve, you look at the landscaping, you'll see there's two trees in the, in that parking area already.
Right, in the back.
In the, yeah. So, it looks like the only place they're really missing one is maybe one more in that row of five parking spaces. I mean, they, I'm not a landscaper, so Kathleen, we'll defer to you. Aren't those trees gonna get fairly large and cover a, um, and provide shade for that parking area? Those, what are they, um?
There are actually two, what I would consider, um, smaller or small to medium. It's, the chitapu is considered what you call a smaller tree. I think the maximum height, what is, maybe like twenty?
Oh, that's it?
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, twenty-five max in the, um.
So would we like to change the species of that to provide more shade?
I don't, I think the smaller ones are, they're probably okay, but I, we could see maybe adding a third one
Yeah, I think that might be good.
The east side of the garage. Yeah. There's just not a lot of room for planting there. Based, trying to get the parking spaces in and what have you.
So, so could, could, um, we maybe ask the designer to come up and see whether or not, where he has those two ADA compliant, maybe he could put this, the, the eight, the seven-foot loading area between the two? Can, can, aren't you, Mr. Foster, aren't you allowed to do that? And, and I would ask you that.
I have done that on other projects and it's been approved.
Okay, so if we did that, then wouldn't that second loading area become an area for a tree then? In the parking area?
I could, certainly I can move, whatever I gain there from one loading bay, I can move that to a landscape area between those parking spaces, whether it's that one or two down, wherever, it just, wherever it suits up, lines up with windows on the building mostly, just.
Cause usually you do kind of gang the, the two ADA with one loading. I, I don't know if facility costs, you know, I mean, in normal commercial act, you know?
Yeah, one, one person backs in, one person drives in. Yeah, exactly.
That's a good question, yeah.
That, um, area to the right of the garage, that's kind of a, what is in that area? It's kind of a dead.
There's a, on the landscape plan it shows a planting, but no trees. It's just, uh,
There is a little planting, but then there's, um, kind of a driveway or a.
Oh, that's, that's actually part of the, even though it's not used, it's part of the easement that belongs to the flood control district.
Okay, okay.
So that's why we didn't, otherwise we'd have blocked that all off. They can't drive anywhere, but I still can't use it.
Okay.
So the, Kathleen, what you're, you're suggesting is limit, my understanding, you're limiting the, the, one of the, combine the, uh, the service and the ADA together into one parking spot to free up a parking stall for landscape or?
So, so that, if you look, stall number one is the van ADA and stall number two is the car ADA. Uh, the van requires the seven-foot loading area.
The wider area.
So, it, in, um, commonly they're put in the middle. I didn't, like I said, I didn't know because of the speciality of this use. But yeah, I just put that in the middle and it provides the loading for both spaces. And that would free up that five-foot loading area to make it a landscape planter. And then you would put another one of these small trees in there and then that would provide, you know?
Shade.
Well, reduce the ambient.
Right.
You know, he was saying that, uh, superheating of the asphalt.
We could also.
Makes sense. We could also just get rid of one of these parking spaces. I mean, could we?
I, um, I think they're right at, the parking, I think they're required to have, they might be, they might have a little bit more. The reason I'm always hesitant to do that is because, you know, they designed it, they kinda know what their needs are with their employees and, you know, whether somebody's coming and like whether, oh, help of Ojai comes and has to pick somebody up. You know, you'd have to ask them if it, if it, if it puts a crimp in their operational, um, you know, to, their operation to have a reduce. But certainly, that five-foot, um, provides.
That, that planter finger, I think you could put another tree in there and that, that gives you all that much more, so that's. And it softens that facade as well, you know, you're, now you're just not looking at building, you've got something in front of it. So I think that's a good solution, yeah?
Steve, I was gonna ask you, um, for the shade structure, would you consider a tree to do the same thing?
Well, I guess if it's, uh, uh, you know, what is the, um, evergreen? Cause, you know? Sure. It's all about just providing shelter from the sun, right?
Yeah, cause, cause trees work as good as anything. I think they're still.
Then they would be required to cut a hole in their, uh, concrete and, or.
Well, they have the lawn area, they have that lawn area where, next to the.
We have the lawn area and besides which we were, you know, the pathways that are leading up to that patio area on the existing lawn, we're gonna be probably resurfacing any existing concrete there to match, cause it's kind of, you know, it's just regular concrete coloring. Wanted to do the colored concrete, so I don't think, it's, it's less intrusive than building a trellis and putting in, uh, substantial footings on each corner is, is, uh.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think it's a great, if we can, if we can specify the tree and, you know, understand what the.
We've got these trees in, I mean, you could actually just.
Does that particular tree work in, in the other? Could that be utilized over in this area over here? This is, this patio is what we're talking about, off the existing.
Oh, I need to get a different shot.
Yeah, you're on, you're looking at the new stuff. Give us a minute here while we reorient ourselves.
Right, let me make sure. Also, you're talking about.
We're talking about this area right here, cause this is a, you know, it's about a communal.
Yeah, and it's the east, um.
Right.
So, and, okay.
So, they're suggesting putting, planting trees in here, so if we, we would have to specify what those trees, so we have an idea of height and, you know?
Well, they could almost use the same species. Use the same species because they tend to be kind of more of a small, medium, really easily controlled as far as the size and pruning. But they're actually both really beautiful and, what do you think, Lawrence?
Yeah, I would, I would use that Chinese fringe tree and just bring it around and make it more.
Yeah, it's, it's a good, manageable, you know, we're not, we don't wanna put something in there that becomes a hazard or.
On the south side of that existing patio area to block sun.
On the south side, I guess.
But it's the east.
It's the east side.
Oh, okay.
Well, east and, and the south, the lawn is, because the sun is coming through via south, nor, uh, you know?
Right.
And so the south side would be the sun rising and.
East side of the building though.
Yeah, the east side of the building.
Okay.
In, in the lawn area.
And with benches, okay. I think we're clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's good.
And it's a big cost saver too.
Yes, yeah, big cost saver.
Good. Further discussion?
Do we have to craft all these, we'd have to craft all these conditions now?
Do we have to craft all these, we'd have to craft all these conditions now?
Right.
I think I got it. I'm going to make, I'm going to take a shot at it anyway.
You still need to do one regarding the, what improvements you want on the existing building.
Right, and I've got that, too.
Okay, good, all right.
Before, I do have one, one question. Trash enclosure, it's always a big deal. This is, this is a residential, but the use of it is, takes it to another, a hybrid level, if you will, between commercial and residence. And typically with our commercial projects, we have to approve the design of the trash enclosure, has to be covered, this sort of thing. And I haven't seen anything in this plan that addresses that. You want to talk, talk to us about trash enclosure?
There's an existing uncovered trash enclosure on the site for, for the push-in larger, you know, several yard containers. Again, if it's a requirement for it to be covered, then we will, we will do so.
Where is it exactly?
It's just along the east edge of the existing building going in on the driveway.
On the east side? Oh, this is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going to lie to you, it's not beautiful.
So is it walled off? Is it, what is it currently fenced?
It's walled with wooden, with wooden fence panels. It's not the most beautiful object I've seen, I have to admit. So it could use some TLC. If there's going to be an additional requirement for, you know, a roof on it, then I think that it's a rebuild probably, not a, not a...
Do you feel it's adequate in size to accommodate the two new...
That I will probably defer on historical, how much waste they generate to Nikki to sort of that, so I don't know how...
Mm-hmm.
What do you think, Neil?
Is the enclosure we have large enough?
Adequate enough to accommodate the new residents and the two new families.
I believe, we have the, the big roll-off that they come in and...
The dumpster.
A big dumpster, and then we also have the same for the recycling.
Oh, so you have two bins?
Absolutely.
Two three-yard bins?
Mm-hmm.
How many times per week?
How many times a week does that empty?
Each or once a week.
Once a week.
So you could potentially stay with the same size enclosure, but you might have to increase...
Pickup.
Pickup times, maybe twice a week, what have you.
And I would ask, are you okay with your employees that are going to be at the new facility, walking all the way down? I mean, I guess the point we're getting at is that if you're going to propose new trash, so these employees don't walk all the way down there, then you need to have it enclosed. So regardless of how much you use, there's also the idea of convenience, you know? So you now have this new facility, and you have all those employees walking all the way down the old facility down. As long as you're okay with that, that's what they're saying.
You know, it usually gets trash duty, so it's okay.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
It's no big deal.
It's a honeydew. It's a honeydew.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think the answer to that is multiple trash pickups, because obviously, it's going to increase dramatically with the size of this building and the usage that's going on. And so that becomes, I don't know, that's something we really need to condition. It's going to be necessity that dictates that one, and the health department, if necessary. Okay? Anything else we want to discuss before someone ventures forth?
What about the deed?
I've got it here.
Oh, you wrote something down?
I did. I'm going to do an attempt at...
Want to give it a go?
Read it, and then we can...
Yep, and we'll modify as we go.
We can talk about it and add to it, or whatever.
So I'm going to propose a resolution, I mean, approval of the design review permit, DRP 1407, additional use permit, CUP 1403, for the development and use of a new two-story residential care facility now in Vista Manor, located at 602 East Oak Street, with the following added conditions. Okay? First condition is a deed restriction for the second unit. The second condition is the upgrading of the existing structure to match the new construction utilizing the same materials. You want to add to that?
Okay, I think we've got a backup.
All right, did you say on the first one, the second unit?
The second story, sorry. Second story residential units.
Units, yes, okay. A deed restriction limiting them to employees of the facility.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Number two.
Okay, number two. Upgrading the existing structure to match the new construction utilizing the same materials.
I think we have to be more specific.
Well, that's where we have, how much more specific can we, do we need to be?
Timeline and some sort of within a year.
Yeah, within a six-month period after construction of the first building.
Well, we need to say specifically what they want. The trim, to paint?
I think it's efficient to match the new proposed architecture.
And we said non-structural also.
Okay.
So I would ask you to consider, as he just said to you now, that you used the phrase, the building or structure, did you say structure?
Upgrading the existing structure, building.
Okay. So you're really interested in that facade that faces...
The road.
Yeah. Okay, so are you concerned about, let's just talk about that, which facade you're interested in? Because if, are you only interested in the one that faces Oak Street, or this, the flood control easement, or are we looking for when people drive into the facility? Because as he said, the whole facade, whether it's the trash enclosure, is not in keeping. It's not, it's dated. So are you looking for just...
I'd like to ask the applicant, what's your intention of the existing building?
Well, you said it want to match.
I think it's all, it's all the whole thing. Not just the facade, it's going to look pretty ratty otherwise.
That's why I kept it broad. I want to do the whole structure.
Right.
I want to do just the front.
Just bits and pieces.
And then when you say broad, how can forced by Kathleen? Forced by Kathleen?
Well, sure.
So the intent would be the front and the side of the building where you drive down. Those are places that it's visible from the street and for visitors, and that's the portion that we want to make consistent with the rest of the colors and materials. So that would include the, that would include the trash enclosure as well, because that's on the side.
I'm just thinking, at this point in time, if we're doing that much, let's just do the building, and then there's no question of that, it will get done properly. We're talking about siding and trim, right? And it brings continuity to the structure.
Or possibly even just paint on the other sides.
There's existing plaster on, on some of the building that would be fine as if it was painted the same color.
It's just painted, yeah. But we want continuity throughout, you know, because the neighbors are going to be looking at it, too.
So, so I understand, the westerly side, that long side that borders that property, that would be, remain plaster, paint, appropriate color. The front facade as it faces East Oak would be, would be, would be redone in terms of its, the facade, and that would match along the driveway side as you move into the property. So it essentially becomes the west-facing portions of the building, the south-facing, and the rear north-facing of the L extension, this portion here. Are we in agreement here?
The east-facing.
Yeah, this is east-facing here.
Yeah.
This is east-facing. And then there's this portion here that encloses this lawn area, and, and then the south-facing.
There's not a whole lot left, that's what you're saying.
It's not a whole lot left.
Well, it's the west, it's the...
So at least the west is the large portion.
Yeah, and that's just going to be paint.
And then this north face over here, that faces the new building, comets?
Seems like it's such a smaller, you'd almost want to do it, but this cost is the issue, too.
I could go either way.
I could either, maybe, I mean, the south, of course, and the east make the most sense, and maybe the west and the north just have the paint.
Paint, I think that's right.
And if they decided on their own they wanted to do more grade, but at a minimum...
Can I, if you were willing to extend the time period to one year, that we're willing to do the whole building?
Okay, I think that's easy.
Done.
Done, yeah.
Let's do that.
She's happy.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So let's, so let's clarify what that means.
I was going to offer, I mean, I haven't confirmed this, but paint and trim on the whole building within the year, and if we could restrict the stone wainscot to the front and the east side, or whatever areas seem to make sense to you that will be very visible, that would help keep the costs down. But your choice.
No, we're not really talking about... I think, I think we were thinking sort of that plan within that same timeframe of six months, were we not? After your completion of doing, because what you're talking, when you said doing the whole building, what did you mean?
Well, I meant complete, complete painting of the exterior to match the new building, trim on the windows to match the casing on the windows, the craftsman-style casing, and then the wainscot, the rock wainscot on the front and the side.
So you don't, you don't visualize using the clad, or the, whatever this product...
The hardy plank and...
Hardy plank over the surfing?
I was hoping to keep the existing plaster just for the cost, I mean...
Okay, yeah. And you want, you want an extra six months to do that?
It's more about budget than time, I think. I think that, just don't want to bleed them dry all at once.
I mean, we're talking about a year from...
From completion of the first part.
From completion of the first, okay.
So might I suggest that you give them two timeframes, that you tell them, six months after completion, you have a deadline to submit to the community ballot department the plans, you know, what you intend to do, and then an additional six months or whatever to complete it. Because obviously, you know, you can get the idea of what you're doing into the department and for review, and then, and then from there, he can work on. I mean, just an idea, if the idea is you're, you're at six months, he's at a year, after six months of completion, show us what, what you need to do, and that way, we can review it and do all that while he's still, they're still working on a budget, and then they're just showing progress. It's hard when you give a year and, and you're not progressing to meeting that goal. So that might be a way of meeting your six months and his year.
And then keeping this, this piece simpler in terms of the language for the condition. And you want to resubmit that?
Well, I think he submits to us, you know, at...
At director level, is that...
At director's level for our approval, and demonstrating what, you know, you know, the plan, you know, paint this, do that with these colors. And I assume that you, you talked about overlaying some of the concrete, too, right?
Yeah, especially where it's visible on, on the side that you drive in, that needs resurfacing and...
So it looks like there'll be a number of things that will bring it in to consistency. And then that way, we can say yes, and we can report back to you, well, you know, here's what they intend to do, and we can come back as a, you know, just an informational item to the planning commission. And then he'll have six months from that time to actually do that. And that way, we're just, we're just kind of moving him along the process.
Very good, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, well, okay, we're going to upgrade the facade of the existing structure to match the new construction utilizing the materials, similar materials, on the front elevation, which we'd call the south elevation, and the east elevation, which includes trim, paint, and rock, rockwork.
Wainscot.
Rock wainscot. But no, but the, but the stucco stays.
Rock on two sides, I think you said.
That's what I said, okay.
And some concrete overlay on the facility, and an upgrade to the trash enclosure.
Got that?
What about the roof matching the...
Thought we said no roof.
We didn't, we didn't, I don't...
Didn't we say no roof?
If it's, if it's working now, I don't see that. And then the other sides that are remaining, paint and trim upgrades to match the existing, not, to match the new construction.
Right, and then if...
Within the period and to submit a plan within six months of when? Of now?
Um, yeah, I think they're, yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, within six months of the approved building permit, with the idea to start within six months to one year after...
Completion.
Completion.
I would say a timely completion, you know, we don't want them to hold one item.
Yeah, right. I think they'll move forward on that.
And that, I just asked that, then you add on to it that if there's any alterations to that, that then that would come, you want me to handle that, any minor alterations, or do you want it to come back to the planning commission?
I would like a director's exemption to, director's approval to handle that matter. Okay, are we okay on that one? The other condition is to add tree, shade trees in the communal area on the east portion of the lawn area. Any other areas that I'm not familiar with?
Possibly the south, I mean, it's about shading the...
And then we also put in the parking lot, two additional ones in the parking lot.
Okay, what?
I would just clarify that when the communal area, you know, without seeing a plan, we're, you know, it's almost speculation, but in order to provide shade, I see as having to provide shade from the east and the south. North and west are covered, west is covered by the building, north is covered because that's indirect light.
So how many trees are you...
Well, you know, that's, depending on how it's landscaped, and you probably could use one big one in the corner.
Because I see one big one in the lawn area. Well, I wanted it to provide the shade, you know, for the, for the communal area.
Well, can we just make them...
Do two?
Two, two there, two in the parking lot, for a total of four, four trees. And what would be an appropriate size? Should we specify a size? So we don't get like one gallon trees in there.
Twenty-four inch box, okay.
And the species?
The existing species.
Yeah, the existing, and they're already using twenty-four inch box, so we're in...
So twenty-four, twenty-four inch box, utilizing twenty-four inch box, the same species that are already proposed.
Okay.
Okay, are we okay with that? Developing the site drainage, okay, with the intention to retain the maximum amount of water on site with the use of bio swells and rain gardens, and to allow the director's exemption to, discretion to determine compliance.
Do we need to say anything about the parking, or is that, in other words, we talked about reconfiguring the ADA, starting...
I think it's, I think we're letting, by just saying two additional in the parking lot, we're allowing him to, their freedom to do however they think is best.
Perfect. Is there anything else? That's all I have on my list.
Everyone go through their final checklist, mostly?
That hits all mine.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I think that's, I think you adjust everything. It's a complicated language, and you did well. Do we, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Lajowski?
Aye.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Congratulations, we made it through. Okay? Thank you. We're taking about a sixty-second break here, folks, uh, bear with us, yeah. To our next public hearing item, which is a request for a conditional use permit fourteen dash zero six, and design review permit DRP fourteen dash one three, to allow for outdoor dining and non-amplified entertainment and modifications to the exterior elevations at Benosso Vita Cafe two oh five North Signal, uh, maybe hear from staff.
Yes, the site, um, as you said, is a two oh five North Signal, it's approximately twelve thousand square feet in sight, and is currently built with a building, or occupied with a building approximately, um, is that correct, nine hundred and thirty-six square feet in size, with an adjoining fifteen twenty-four, uh, hundred square foot outdoor patio. Uh, the pri, the site was previously used as a restaurant with outdoor dining, um, and it's before you tonight, because our code has it to where when you have a conditional use permit for outdoor dining, it does expire with non-use. So as you all know, this building was vacant for some period of time, and thus before you tonight is the conditional use permit, um, to allow outdoor dining. Uh, the remainder of the lot is, um, striped with eight parking spells, including one ADA, and the applicant has submitted a package which includes a site plan, floor plan, elevations, um, a request to have outdoor di, dining, beer and wine service, shared parking, and other modifications to the exterior building, and I don't think anything is really unusual about any of those things, I think that in this particular case, we're, we're giving you the parameters of the, the use when it intends to be, um, open, and, um, and the, you know, of course, outdoor dining, but I think that the point tonight for consideration is that he's also asking to be allowed non-amplified entertainment in the form of acoustic guitar, poetry readings, paint nights, and a once-a-month food truck event for the community. Like to note that we did say there's eight parking spaces on site, so these types of events will require specific conditions restricting duration, hours of operation, parking availability, and access to the site. Because they are temporary in nature, they will require the applicant to apply for a temporary use permit, and so that condition of approval has been added, which, you know, states that, and so, um, with that, you know, we would, um, ask you to consider, I mean, sometimes there can be conditions that allow, you know, certain activities on an ongoing basis, but we continue to get, um, I think, as we all see in Ojai, we continue to get restaurants and some of the motels here that are very creative in what they do, and a lot of pop-up type nights, and, and things that, that get advertised for, via social media, and can be, um, very impactful to the streets and the traffic in, in Ojai, so, um, it's, staff feels it's, it's more, um, appropriate to have those things looked at on a case-by-case basis than to just kind of try to blanket, provide conditions that may either, one, be too restrictive, or maybe not restrictive enough, depending on what they find works for their particular, um, business. So with that, um, they are requiring, requesting design review, um, permit for the exteriors to the modifications, exterior modifications to the building, um, which is required in the VMU Zone District, along with the request for the conditional use permit, and so with that, I think the staff report makes it very clear why they're before you with the, um, outdoor, as far as outdoor dining facilities, the public, uh, assembly, the reduction in the number of parking spaces, et cetera, and, um, explains the consistency, or the zoning consistency, and, um, in, in as far as the parking is concerned, you know, their, their proximity to a public parking lot that's within five hundred feet of their location. And with that, I guess I just, um, would do the usual, um, notations, which is, you know, this was deemed exempt from, from exequa, or sequa, under categorical exemption class three, and, um, publicly noticed, or proper noticing put into the paper for the, for the surrounding neighborhood, and with that, just ask you to, um, review the report and take testimony tonight, and then, um, uh, move for approval with the conditions that are suggested in the resolution before you tonight, and I am open for any questions or clarifications that you may have.
Questions for staff? Thank you, Kathleen, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Welcome. You can all come up, it's fine.
Hi, I'm Amy Tripp from AB Design Studio, uh, here with Sean and Felicia, who are the owners of Nosso Vita, um, and we just thank you for your time and for reviewing our project, um, really excited about, you know, what they wanna bring to this new cafe, and, um, so we're here for the approval for the conditional use permit and for the design review permit, um, and looking at kind of reinstating the outdoor dining, and also so that they're able to sell beer and wine that will be consumed with, within the premises, um, and also for some non-amplified entertainment, and then for the design review permit, which I can speak more to, and then I might have them sort of chime in as far as the, the program that they really wanna, um, push for the non-amplified entertainment. Um, for the design portion, what we wanna do is really more, uh, m, minor modifications that I think will really improve the site, but, you know, we're not, um, proposing to do any additions, it's mainly really cleaning up the paint and, um, and also doing some new, or painting also the low wall, leaving the brick and just painting in between that, and then replanting, uh, the existing planters, um, with some sort of new kind of mod, more modern, uh, low maintenance planting, um, and also putting in some new lights on the, on the existing columns. So I think as far as the mod, the improvements that we're proposing, they're, they're pretty minimal, but I think they'll have a really, a really great impact on the site, and being close to downtown, I think will really invite more people to come, come over there. And then, I guess if you guys wanna maybe talk a little bit about the entertainment portion, or sort of how you see the, the site being used?
Yeah, hi. So kind of in the creating of this, it's really community-driven, um, and the things I'm thinking of wouldn't be disruptive as far as the two residences that are there, so one for the non-amplified music, if there was some kind of acoustic guitar playing that was more mellow, um, and then other things that I was thinking are more of, uh, of an interactive, and I don't know if it'd be a noise type of issue, is that what you mean as far as entertainment, like, you know?
Yeah, just different events that you...
Right, so you know, for, for an example, um, and this has not even been implemented, but like, drawing the person next to you with your eyes closed, so something that would be, uh, kind of pulling entertainment, having people interact with each other, kind of a fun environment, um...
More like just community, really community activities, that people could come and participate in.
Right, trivia night, how they do, um, in Miners Oak, something that would be similar to that, perhaps, having people come, the community come, having something to do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any other examples of?
Uh, no, I mean, that fits it, yeah.
I, I did have an idea where, uh, you'd have your husband paint your nails night, but I don't know if that's gonna go through. Okay. But, but something playful, we're both very playful, so, yeah. Yeah.
This, it's, it's a great idea, I like this mixed media, this interaction, the foot traffic, I mean, this is exactly what this, that corner needs, so, thank you for bringing that forward to us, I, I like this eco mesh wall, where, where's that going?
That would basically go, uh, it would screen the restroom door, so it's...
You're welcome.
On the out, oh, on the outside of the building there?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, but it breaks up the plaster, the mass, and all that, with some greenery, right?
Yeah, I, I, I like what you're doing, uh, we need this in Ojai, it folds up too early, and, you know, even if, even if I'm at home, not going out, I love the fact that somebody else could.
Absolutely.
You know?
No, I come...
I think it's important...
It's a new concept for Ojai.
Absolutely. My, um, I come from, my parents own Bonnylou, so I come from this hospitality, very playful environment, and if anybody knows my mother, Jennifer, she's, um, you know, quite a ball of energy, so I definitely share that, and bringing that, I mean, this is, growing up here is my opportunity to give back and like, get connected and have community issues be seen and heard, and people made, felt a part of something, and, uh, you know, driving through Ojai at eight PM on a Friday night, and there's nowhere to go, I'd love to have my friends come visit and be like, you know, come, come to Nosso Vita, so.
And, and the, the food truck thing was mentioned.
Oh, right.
The lot right next to it that has the wood chips, or, that, that's part of our lease as well, um, so while there's no striped parking there, that, that is an overflow area for us, so, um, and it, you know, if it, if it's something that we have to get approved every time we do it, that's fine, but we, just so you know, we do have that additional area that's either for parking, or for where we would put food trucks, if in fact, we got approved for that, so, it doesn't impact the parking that's on the actual property that we have.
That was always an overflow area for the previous restaurants for parking.
Yeah.
So i, is that being entertained tonight, that this, a temporary use idea of that property? I think I saw something about that.
I think Kathleen said she, she wants to utilize, uh, a different permit, a conditional, not a conditional use permit, a, um...
That's what you were addressing earlier, Kathleen?
I think, I think the, um, it just needs to be very clear that, you know, anything they do within the building, you know, if they wanna have acoustical guitars, or those kind of things inside the building, that certainly doesn't require a temporary use permit, it's when they're outside, and then there's impacts to, you know, the neighbors, as she said, there's residents there, so there has, so there has to be, um, limitations on, you know, the hours, so you have, I mean, I know you're gonna find...
Didn't I read that in there though?
Right.
On like, the acoustic guitar, ten o'clock at night or something?
Right, so, so we could try to craft some conditions that would give them some parameters for their temporary uses, but I'm sure they're gonna be very creative, and they're, and I don't wanna over-condition them, that's my concern, I don't wanna think of every, you know, every situation, and then just, you know, really squeeze the creativity out of them.
Sure.
I also don't wanna be cost prohibitive and make them come in every time they wanna do something, so the, the idea of conditioning them was, if you're doing something that is, that is outside the building envelope, outdoors, um, that's when you would require a temporary use permit.
But I would think that that's where the guitar player might be, outside in the patio, strumming, or these...
Yeah, you don't need a permit for that.
Right.
Yeah, you guys are, you guys are free to craft that any way you feel.
Comprehensively what we're talking about here.
How hard, how hard or easy is it to get a temporary use permit, city of Ojai?
It's not hard, but it costs two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, well...
So what would be an example of a temporary use permit is what we have to...
The food trucks, I would think.
When you have a special event or something where it's, it's not something you would normally do in your normal business hours, can you give me an example of what that may be, a, a, a...
Somebody sugge, no, this came from somebody else, somebody suggested putting up a sheet, 'cause it, 'cause in the back of the parking lot, there's a bocce ball court, and then behind that is just an open dirt area, so putting up a sheet and showing a movie up there, and where, you know, families can come and watch the movie, and it's a kind of a family, somebody suggested that, I'm not sure that we're committed to doing something like that, but that would be an example, the food truck would be another example of having a food truck that would add some different kind of flavor of food, that would complement what we do, and would create, you know, more of a communal atmosphere.
Like the commons, you know, I mean, it'd be a standing conversation, I guess, and, and I don't know, just to answer that question fully, if there was a time, we were, we were considering, you know, one Sunday a month, like a Sunday, one Sunday a month, community event, so I don't know if that would be the case, um, if we would need to come in and get a temporary use every, if, if that was going to work, if we would do that every month.
Would the food truck be just at night, or would it be...
No, during the daytime.
So you could do...
So the thought was like a Sunday?
In conjunction with the farmer's market?
Was, is the farmer's market Saturday?
No, Sunday.
On Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we hadn't thought about that kind of a conjunction, but it would be kind of an afternoon, early evening.
Maybe Saturday would probably be more appropriate.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think, I think it's more to their, the concept of there being possibly something once a month, or at once every two months, um, to be more of a community event.
If nobody came, we wouldn't continue it. Then of course, that, that, you know, it would be something that the community, if it resonated with the community, and, and it was something that was wanted, then it would be something that we'd continue, so right now it's an idea, it's not something that we are definitely planning to do, but we'd like to try.
So would the customers still be within your patio and inside the building, or are they meandering through the parking lot, or what does this look like? Uh, 'cause you talked about this adjacent parcel where, where you could use for, um, you know, yeah, food trucks coming up, I, I kind of visualize people going to a food truck, and then hanging out, and, you know, I mean...
Yeah, filling the parking lot.
How far does it go?
I think for, I think for most of the events, it would be contained within the patio, but I think for maybe some, like a special community event, that they would apply for the temporary use permit, perhaps you'd, you'd sort of...
Maybe that's how we qualify it, anything within the...
I think, I think that, we have this, just to give you some more background, not with this restaurant, but, um, you know, we have these events that go on, they are a source of complaints we get all the time at the City Hall, because why some people feel they're just great and they bring people in, when you're in this mixed neighborhoods where there's commercial adjacent to residents, there are some people that just wanna go to sleep, and so you just have to consider that, um, you know, the ten o'clock, um, noise goes down very low here in Ojai, it's almost impossible for you to be doing anything and comply with the noise regulations, because they're, it's quiet time, so if there's residents adjacent to them, I, you know, I just think, if you're going to do that, you're gonna have to put that, that, regardless of whether it's acoustical guitar or not, um, you know, at ten o'clock, it's, it's done, so we were trying, like I said, it's just a push-pull, you know, we were trying to not over-condition them, I agree that anything on the patio and acoustical, and, and, um, you know, within, and then terminating at ten o'clock is fine, and that anything out of the ordinary that, that, I see, so here's, here's what happens, you have, um, um, acoustical guitar, and it, and we're used to eating, let's say, Mexican food, and you have the mariachi guy strolling through, and you have no idea who he is, and that's one, um, example of how you do a business model, the other example is that you have these people that everybody knows who they are, and you advertise them on social media, and you have a huge, um, what do they call them, like flash mob that comes, because all of a sudden you have two hundred people, because every, you have no idea who's gonna show up, because it's all done through social media, and we have that happen here, and that's when we get the, that's when we get the complaints, and I don't really know how you can condition the difference between, one, somebody who's strolling with a guitar and he's acoustical, and he's just adjunct to you eating there, and somebody who's really an, a, a headliner, and you have a lot of people coming out, and all of a sudden, that whole resit quasi-residential commercial neighborhood is, is full of cars, at the same time you've got the farmer's market going on, and then I'm flooded with complaints, so I, that's the only reason that we, we said, like how she's saying, you know, give her her parameters of what she can do on a daily day basis, and let them come in for temporary use permits for the activities that are gonna be above and beyond, and, and what happens is that then we sort of know what's going on in the neighborhood, and so we can actually look to the point that we're, I mean... we can actually look to the point that we're, I mean, that where neighborhoods start to get really impacted because there's just so many people and there's no parking and people get their drive, driveways boxed off and things of that nature. That's all we're asking for.
I have a question. Is there a way that we could maybe condition this until you have a more solid concept of actually what's gonna work and what isn't gonna work? I mean, can we condition it as you suggested and then put, put a sunset clause on this or that yet in 12 months they can come back before us in a, if you have a more concrete plan? If with, can we do that?
You mean so they don't have to do temporary use permits all the time?
No, no, no. I think, I think we should, I'm-
Oh, okay.
Start though.
Correct.
You're saying to start with the, with the plan of using a temporary use permit and then, but in six months or a year to come back with a more broad plan so therefore they could avoid having to continue to do it.
Totally. I think that, I think if they had that, I think if we had some concrete idea of what they were doing and we could give you conditions, I think that's totally appropriate.
Okay, well, I think that's good.
What about the fact that they mentioned the once a month Sunday thing? That's, that's something, is, is that a more of a possibility or something you want to pers-
We just don't know what will work.
Right. So I think the process, idea, the process that we're discussing kind of fits your model, you know?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Gives us some flexibility to find yourselves, right?
I will tell you this, that after they have their first event, we will know and they will know what their neighbors in their neighborhood will tolerate. So it's always good to kind of let that first one kind of flush out and then we get the complaints and we, we can kind of then craft. Cause like I said, we're trying to avoid being overly burdensome with conditions.
And at the same time, we still realize there's, there's always a, there's a cutoff time limit at this 10 o'clock. I think 10 o'clock is typically what it is for loud noise. We could go with that in this current condition, right?
You know, although it's outside city limits, if you look at Farm and the Cook on a Sunday evening with their music and the turnout they have.
On a Sunday evening?
Sunday evening. It's very popular, so.
Yes, it is, yeah.
And, you know, we want to be good neighbors. So if we started doing something that bothered people,
Right.
we'd pull it back. We're not, I mean, you would probably make us pull it back, but
We would do it willingly.
without that, we're not interested in, in being the, that place.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
That place, but not that.
So what are we really then talking about?
We, we keep it pretty basic as to way it's presented to us.
It's already drafted that way.
And with the added idea that they come back, that you suggested, Mac, or whatever timeframe, you know?
Do we have to set a timeframe or is that at their discretion?
I think it's got to be at their discretion.
I think it's set up right now to just act indefinitely the way it's written. And then if they want to avoid having to come in for those permit, you know, those, those temporary use permits, then it's really up to them to come and propose something more broad to avoid that.
Well, I would only say that on condition number four, where it says the applicant shall submit an application for a temporary use permit for all events that are outside the building envelope. You probably need to modify that and say building envelope and patio area because I heard, what I heard from you is that you wanted to let them go ahead. So I think that's the only change I see from your discussion.
Okay.
What about the time?
Oh, I think it's, you know, obviously the city has performance standards that, that require that you be noise compliant, but you might as well put a condition in there. I like to do that so they're aware of it. We don't like to go out and blindside people and say, by the way. So, you know, you just, it would be good to say events occurring, noise, you know, that however you want to, yeah, after 10 o'clock, you know, they need to, you know, they, all activities on the, in the patio area shall comply with the, the noise standards.
Was that already worded somewhat in the condition?
Well, isn't it already an ordinance?
Where did I see that?
Page three of five, second to last paragraph, from the bottom.
Okay, right.
That's number four. Where's the, the time?
Oh, it's in a staff report. It's in a staff report and it just says, you know, they're saying on Sundays they go to 10. I think you saw that. That there was, there are hours of operation and it says, that there, because of the project as zones, VMU staff recommends the outdoor dining use, serving of beer and wine and any entertainment in the patio area be restricted to the hours of 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. But I do not see that reflected in a condition. So you probably need to add that as a condition number. Well?
Number-
Well, six and I guess we'll push everything and renumber it.
Move everything up a notch.
And then re, renumber six to number seven. Since seven's kind of the catchall legal requirements. So I would recommend you do that.
So where were you, where were you reading that in the staff report? What page was that?
Page five.
Yeah.
Second to the last paragraph.
And I think what they're saying by VMU is just the acknowledgement that it's a mixed use and there are some residents in the area.
And also VMU requires a CUP for the serving of alcohol.
Yeah.
And one other thing is temporary use permits are for nonprofit.
Well, yeah, it's, and they have, in order to do a temporary use permit currently under the code the way it is, you have to have a sponsor to do one. And most people just, you know, we get them in and they just, they, they have a certain amount. It just, you just have to have a sponsor.
And they figure it out.
Yeah. And, and we're looking into changing that because, because the city of, the city of Ojai really wants to encourage these events and the temporary use requirements are kind of a little dated. And I think probably, you know, at the same time looking to, you know, I, I mean, the fees are all being looked at too by city council. So the idea is to make it easier, change the noticing and, and maybe even provide a different avenue where somebody who's, I mean, temporary use permits are usually where you don't have a physical building and you're doing something on an outdoor unpaved area. It's usually a different type of permit you're getting for something that's in conjunction with a brick and, you know, mortar building and you're just doing, you know, sidewalk sales and those kind of things where, you know, you, yeah. So we'll be looking at that.
Can you just, what you were just talking about with the temporary use permit and the sponsor? Can you just clarify that and if that would be something that they would need to?
Yeah, so temporary use permits, there's, there's, I think, three or four criteria in there. And one is that, you know, you have like a nonprofit element to you. So usually when people are doing them, they have some, they, they have a certain percentage of the proceeds going to some kind of nonprofit. And it's really of your choice. You know, the city doesn't really regulate that in a way. It just, it just happens to be part of our code. But there is, you know, there is, it's, it hasn't been a problem in the past. Most people just have, you know, just pick something and they have a sponsor or there's, you know, like I said, a percentage of the proceeds are going to them.
Okay, thanks.
Because I will be asked repeatedly, what type of food are you gonna be serving?
We do have a very, they have a very good menu.
Salads, sandwiches, and then we've got pasta. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a limited menu. I mean, I can tell you some of the things.
Yes.
So small, small plates, marinated olives and house garlic crostini. The note of Nosovita anti pasta with an assortment of imported cheeses, house cheeses, nuts, cured meats, pickled local vegetables, apple chutney, tapenade and garlic crostini. I don't know, some of you may know Marcus-
Hollingsworth.
Hollingsworth? Do you know? So he's a, he's a local chef. We've hired him to create our menu. He was at the ranch house, he was at the inn. He's actually relatively well known in this area. Pad Thai bites with whole basil leaves, rice noodles, grilled chicken breast, peanut sauce and cilantro, grilled apple chorizo, pepitas, candied lemon cilantro and berico crema.
We better practice these.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I know.
Can you also? We got it. So what's, what's the derivation of the name?
Well, it's, 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 it's literally something from nothing. So noso is a created word and vita meaning life. So it's actually create life. And our, our, you know, Sean and I have a law practice in Santa Barbara. Estate planning and divorce mediation attorney and I'm a paralegal. And we never thought that our lives would have brought us here. But our passion isn't for the espresso and the wine. It's for the atmosphere and the connection. And we were both clear that working in offices and drafting documents all day did not utilize what we were committed to in the world. So, taking quite a leap here. And it's, it's to provide an environment to this community for the possibility to create who you are in a moment, like a provocative environment to express yourself. That's literally what it means. Yeah, good.
Great, great. Okay. Do we need to incorporate the hours of operation into the conditions or?
No, I think just the, the condition on the outdoor activities. Yeah.
Air and wine and entertainment.
Okay, okay.
So a question just for clarification. So the entertainment I'm clear about, so no music after 10. Are we allowed to stay open past 10?
Oh, certainly.
Okay. And then serving beer and wine. If we serve beer and wine, are people able to drink that out on the patio area?
Well, they, um, I think that-
I don't know why not.
It's the noise. It's not the beer, the beer and wine. Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think, I don't, I think that the staff recommendation was to limit the beer and wine outside, but I, I really don't see a reason to do that. I think you just need to be aware that there are limits, you know, to the noise. So it's just, I think just, we just have to be concerned about entertainment outside. People can drink their wine quietly.
Sipping, no gulping.
Right.
So, are we clear?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we can wrap this up with-
I had only one thing just to add. And the, the only thing for the design portion was that since we submitted this, we actually ended up finding a light to go on those columns. That was a bit more elegant and really fits with this project. And I have sort of an updated elevation that you can look at in comparison and then also-
I think we just have to look at it as it relates to our dark sky ordinance.
And actually this, this, it has basically the same low wattage and these ones actually shine down.
Okay, there's a hood over the top type thing. Okay. Yeah, pass it around.
I saw the, I saw the light today.
We need small plates while we're looking at those.
Today. Lights are much nicer than what's there. They have these cheap.
You may already put them on?
No, no, what's there right now has these cheap black lanterns.
Oh, yeah.
These are really nice.
It overpowers the-
This is, yeah, no, these are way nicer. They comply with the lighting.
So in looking at this light, the bulb is still exposed. And so the city's lighting ordinance isn't gonna allow you to have the bulb, the bulb can't hang down from the, even though it's, it's-
The hood has to come to-
Yeah, they have to be completely shielded. Thank you, Sherri. Yes.
Would it, would it work with one of the bulbs that are, they have that coating almost on it that would shield the bottom?
You can purchase a shield that goes around the bulb and that works as a retrofit. But they make similar light fixtures like this that are either LED or halogen where you don't have the bulb hanging down like that. And you get the same look, but the bulb is up inside. And, and so you might want to look for something of that nature just so that you get the look you want. But you don't have this shield hanging down because the shield is really not very attractive. It's kind of a retrofit for older light styles. But those kind of, so you, so you could either shield it or you could have, look for one similar to that with which the bulb is up inside. There's, and you can see-
I guess, I guess we could, would it work if there was a smaller bulb than the one shown that actually
Oh, sure.
was, fell within that, the shaded portion so that it didn't hang out?
Right. If it, if it came under the, the bell part of it and not-
Yeah, the canopy has to extend to the underside of the lamp.
So I think, I think there, that we could, I think there is a, a light bulb that we can put in there.
That's fine, but you just need to make sure that when you submit that for our approval, when you're pulling your building permit to do your modifications, that you have all that information to us, you know, because we won't sign you off with a light that's not compliant with our new ordinance. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we're, uh, was there, uh? I think we should open this up to a public comment that we haven't heard. Does anybody from the public like to speak on the matter? Please, Del.
Nothing to do with what you're talking about. Except that if you have to have a nonprofit that is recipient, the Green Coalition is right across the street and they can help you with the lights. They're the ones that proposed it. And I do hope you'll have vegan food on your, on your menu. Thank you.
There's some good, good free advice there.
Right.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing then. Comment, rather. Discussion. Our planning commissioners.
I'm hungry.
Yeah, I think we're all hungry now. Motion? Who wants to run with this?
So we're not really adding anything other than, yeah, we've already got the time covered and everything, right? So I'm just gonna make a-
No, you don't.
No, you need to, you need to add the time.
I just wanted to make sure.
The patio.
And, and she wants to add the patio area to the item number four.
Oh, that's right here.
Building envelope.
So we're moving that a notch.
Yeah, there we go. I've got it. Okay. All right. So I will make a motion that we adopt PC Resolution CUP 14-06 and associated design review permit DRP 14-13 allowing for outdoor dining and non-amplified entertainment and modifications to the exterior elevations on the subject property subject to the findings and conditions of approval with the following additions to the conditions. So, and I'll just refer, this is attachment A, page three of five for everyone. So the item number four, the applicant shall submit an application for a temporary use permit for all events that occur outside of the building envelope and patio area. And then to add a number six, let me make sure I'm, I'm stating this correctly. You had it on there. That entertainment in the patio area not extend past 10:00 PM on a daily basis. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Six has to get changed to seven.
And the legal requirement.
Yeah, then number six will goes to number seven, absolutely. And that would be it.
Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Go, Paul.
Jowski?
Aye.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Go for it, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item. This text amendment TA 13-04 to an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ojai. California amending the city's second dwelling compliance program guidelines virgin, version three dated November 19th, 2014 as it relates to the implementation of the second dwelling unit compliance program of the 2014 to 2021 housing element of the Ojai general plan. We'll hear from staff.
Okay, so thank you very much. And I'd just like to say that this, as we all know, has kind of the, either the beginning of actually adopting this and sending it up to city council or depending on you look at or the ending of a year-long process between the planning commission and the building appeals board to update this second dwelling compliance program guidelines. And I would just like to note that the reason for the long introduction for the subject is to be very specific because these guidelines have been, this is the third version. And we want to make sure that when you get adopted, people know which version this is and we, and very, very clear. So with that, I'd just like to say that I gave you a little brief staff report that kind of talks about why you worked on this was to remove unnecessary obstacles to getting units constructed without the benefit permit made legal to provide a clearer process of how to go through this process and to create forms and a simplified application. And so we have, part of this process was to create a new application, new modified zoning standards, new eligible dwelling criteria, a very clearly delineated process between planning and building, a new housing standards checklist, an in-surface state criteria, an in-surface state affidavit, a zoning conformance certification and inclusion of building appeal and code interpretation.
a zoning conformance certification, and inclusion of building appeal and code interpretation procedures. They should all be in your packet for you tonight. And so, I guess now this, this program has gotten kind of thick. I have also given you the building appeals board minutes from their meeting of October 29th, as requested by planning commission at the last meeting. And with that, I can go through the program really quickly, which the first page is the general description, eligibility criteria. Those things were all modified by you and approved to you, and they should be presenting themselves in this program now as you drafted them, and up until the modified zoning standards. And then, from that point, the building process became the purview of the building appeals board. And so, they asked during their last meeting that, because we were using the building permit application form, which is a very, it's intense, it has a lot of information and things that could be overwhelming for a homeowner trying to get into this, get through this program. We will still be using the building permit application if they need to pull a building permit, and then at that point, they should have probably a contractor or something assisting them with that. And so, that part will still be there. So, with that, on page five of 20 is our new application, and it just kind of is very simple and straightforward, hopefully, user-friendly. And then, on the next page is our instructions and guidelines. And we've included on page eight, the program support, which talks about, you know, the ombudsman. And then, on nine is the second dwelling compliance program housing standards checklist. That's, was something that we worked with the building appeals board through, you know, and as I stated to them, and I, I don't mean to be redundant, but I don't remember at this point who I said what to. This is a negative checklist because it's easier for us to identify a set of finite negativity than it is to verify that everything in a unit is appropriate. That would be very difficult. So, that's why it's negative. We don't mean to, you know, to put in that. It just happens to work that way. And, and it actually kind of works well because then the person has a definitive list of the things they need to correct, and it would seem, I think, doable at that point because we hope that there aren't very many things checked. And with that, just at the end, there's an inspection information on the back of that on page 12. It just talks, you know, about when, when you had an inspection, who it was conducted by, were there records searched done? And then, the in-service date on page 13 talks about, as we've discussed both previously, really trying to isolate a timeframe for each unit so that we can tell, you know, when they get into the building code compliance area, what building codes, what they need to really, what really apply to this particular unit. So, again, this is kind of creating a project that's kind of general in nature, but then refines down to a case-by-case specifics. So, you would have, you know, some of this stuff that says, you know, did the construction occur prior to incorporation of the city? Was it annexed into the city? Did it prior, did it come between, prior to adoption of the city zoning or building codes? Those kind of, all those kind of things. So, we're letting people know that there's triggers, and depending on how old your unit is, you really have less hurdles to jump through than someone who gets a modern unit. Again, trying to open and be transparent to those people who might want to make, avail themselves of this program. The affidavit where they, where they're acknowledging the in-service date, and then a zoning conformance on page 15 of 20. And these things, I think, all help because, as we know, zoning conformance would be appealed to you folks at the planning commission. Then, decisions of the building field, building official can be appealed on page 16. On 17 is what does the building appeals board do, and the building appeal application, and the code interpretation application. Any of those things can be, you know, can be removed from this if it seems overwhelming, but we tried to get a whole comprehensive package together so people kind of knew their rights and the process. And, I mean, so that, you know, it got thicker, but I think it's also at the same time more clear. And it, and each one of the individual, you know, components have, you know, they're, they're large type, they're easy to read, and I don't, and I don't think, even though the, the depth of the, the application now is a little bit more pages, I think the clarity kind of outweighs that, and I think it's still user-friendly. And with that, you can find on page one of two, the resolution. The city council's going to, if you decide to adopt this without any changes tonight, go forward to city council. That, that would be what you approve. And I just want to make one other point, and that was the environmental review. As you know, this was, an addendum was prepared and certified by the city council, connected with, in connection with the updated housing element. This second dwelling compliance program is part of, you know, the housing element, and was all detailed out in that SEQA document. There's nothing in this new compliance program that has any, that results in any impacts that would, you know, creating any environmental impacts that would require additional SEQA review. So, with that, we just want to make sure that you, we understand that this is just a fine-tuning of the program.
Sorry, what do you mean about the SEQA? Could you just explain that a little bit more? I'm not clear.
So, so like, most of your projects that you get are usually categorically exempt from SEQA. This happens to be one where there was a previous environmental document done with the housing element, which was an addendum. And it was certified by the city council when they did the updated housing element, which I guess would be last year in December. And so, SEQA allows you to continue to use that SEQA document that was adopted by city council, provided that whatever changes you make in the program don't have additional impacts. And so, this, this, this isn't anything that's creating any new impacts. It's, it's really an administrative cleanup of a program that already existed, already had its impacts analyzed. And so, all we're really doing is changing administrative policies. Yeah, simplifying, clarifying. So, I just want to make sure that you are aware that the, there's the SEQA acknowledgements in there. It's just a little different than a CAT exam. And with that, I'm open to any questions or any clarifications.
What?
Go ahead, Chester, go ahead.
What is the city's plan of notifying potential clients who need to know about this program?
So, once this is adopted by city council and it becomes, you know, the pro, the pro, I mean, there are many people, I shouldn't say many, but we know of some people that are waiting for the changes, right? But we do have an ombudsman that would be part of the outreach. I, I don't really know, I haven't really given that much thought. Let me assume that we'll put notification on the website, and, yeah, yeah. So, I think that, you know, obviously, we're hoping people will use it, but at the same time, we're hoping we're not going to get flooded all at once, but you never know. So, I think that definitely that there's going to be outreach. And, oh, and then I, we're, we are also, with this, I'll be doing a, some kind of handout that will go, you know, in our, in our kiosk out there, whatever you want to call it, the handout. But that couldn't be worked on until this actually gets adopted because I, you know, I wanted to wait until everything was finalized. But yeah, I think there'll be a lot of outreach. I think we've been on TV a number of times talking about this, so I imagine people kind of know about it now, but they're really wondering how, how many more people are going to fall in, in the qualifier of this program, and I think there's going to be a lot more.
Yeah, I was thinking there might be a nice packet that you can give out. You've done a great job on this, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
I really liked the final product. And maybe there's a packet that we can have, or a little display at the city counter, to take, you know, take one, you know, which kind of gives a summary of, you know, everything that's here. So, it starts to become more common knowledge that this is a program that's available now.
And, and we, as we did when the other program first started, we'll be bringing back to you, you know, numbers when we see people start to use the program, and I think, you know, and, and, and an update, which also always brings it back to the forefront. We just haven't had anybody using the program now, so there's nothing to report. But yes, we will be doing those things.
Good.
My question was answered, so.
I think this negative sheet is great. This doesn't, what, what is not right.
On the checklist?
Checklist, yeah.
I have a question. Why, what did we, I don't remember the many iterations we've discussed, but what, what did we mean by all utilities have to have a common service connection?
Well, um, they can have separate meters.
They cannot?
No, they cannot. That's what that means.
Did we discuss that?
I don't think, I don't really know. Yeah, it's in the... I, you know, it's a, it's, it's an odd, in, in my experience, it's an odd thing to have because usually a separate meter means it's a legal unit. So, you, the first question you ask somebody, well, do you have a separate meter? Oh, it must be legal. You couldn't get a separate meter unless you're legal. The issue with two separate meters is, we all know electricity tiers, right? So, if you have two families on one meter, you are by nature tearing up in the cost per kilowatt or whatever it is you're using. That's the reason people weigh that out, and they say, plus, you know, when you're renting to somebody, they, you kind of want them to pay their own utility bill. So, having a separate meter, in my thoughts, is always a good thing, and it keeps things kind of separate. I don't know what was thought, because, because usually you say no...
Reason it was commonly metered was to help control having an owner occupied because you wouldn't want two renters having to share.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. There's the reason. But, you know, again, as we talked before, you know, you have to decide which, which, which constraint really drives the thing. We already have talked about the deed restriction. I don't know if common meters really helps, but it does, it does financially make a difference to somebody. Most people would prefer separate meters.
It just seems like, it's just one of those things that, what are you going to do if it's not like that? If it has a separate meter already, then they're automatically disqualified from the program. That seems counterproductive.
I don't disagree, and I think that the building official, and they've commonly seen that too, that when you buy the, when you get a, when you get a legal unit, you are entitled to a separate meter. I know that there has been an occasion that somebody has gotten one here. I think that, I've seen that since I've been here, and it, because it's just, it's just so out of the ordinary to make somebody have a common meter. But you heard Sherri, that's, that they thought it was a way of controlling, yeah.
It is really difficult in reality because the water company fights it as well. They don't want, they want the second unit to, it, it poses a problem all the time.
So, we're fine with you wanting to remove that, and I don't, I don't really know at what point it was discussed. But, you know, we, as staff, would prefer it not being there.
I would concur.
Because, because all the, the new second dwellings all require to have separate services.
No, they're not. They are in the, the regular code prohibits it.
For second dwellings?
Mm-hmm.
To have a separate, not to have a separate meter?
That's why this is in here, because like, like she said, things, people, the building appeals board was wondering, why is this in there? It's because it's addressed in the regular code, in the main code. And if you don't say it here, then the main code applies. So, you would have to leave this in and say, they don't have to be commonly metered.
Right.
Or else it automatically...
She's just saying, she's saying the, the, the criteria that's here is modified. And what, and what we decided to do was put everything in here so they didn't have to go to the old, to the existing code modified.
Right.
It was all in one document, so it was friend, user-friendly. So, that may have not been on your radar before because it was in the, you know, you had to refer to both documents, you had to have a parallel review going here. When we put everything in one place, this is all the things you have to comply with, you may not have called that out, but yes, so that is, that is, that is...
So, we can supersede...
Yes, you may.
The main building code by stating that it does not apply to this...
You know, to say that, have a common service, you could just say, you know, all you, you know, utilities may be have a se... Yeah, or you could just say, yeah.
Utilities may have.
May have common service.
May or common or separate.
Or separate, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we, it makes it easier on us, and most people would prefer to have separate, like I said, because of the escalating cost as you put more families on one meter.
Right.
So, all that discussion that we kept having of regarding, like, the sewer connection was so expensive. I thought it was like everyone had to have a separate sewer connection.
We don't have control of those utilities. So, this, this condition right here is, we can only control what we can control, which, you know, I mean, it's like Sherri's saying, they, they want you to have it. So, in a way, it's kind of a dated criteria.
And I think their criteria was if it had a kitchen in it, it was required to have a sewer, a separate sewer connection, correct? That, doesn't that, doesn't that trigger? Well...
Just the fee.
There's a fee in it. That's what it is. It's not a separate connection.
Food preparation area.
Okay, that's the legal language there.
Which could be a microwave, right?
Okay.
So, we're fine, draft a different modification for that.
All right. Any more discussion with the staff? We have public comment time. We see building appeals board members out there. Any, please, yeah. You stuck it out. Good for you.
I did. Well, I'm only one board member on the building appeal board, so I can speak only for myself. But I'm really glad, Rosalie, you brought that up because I wonder too why they, that was in there. And it seems to me that that would be addressed with the fact that there's a deed restriction, you know. So, I think that I would like it, I don't know how the others feel, but I'd like it if that was taken out or if the word "may" was placed in there. Also, when we had the ombudsman appear here a couple of weeks ago, her concern was that she's not a contractor, and she doesn't have, you know, she doesn't want to be placed in a position where she'd be liable for something. So, the suggestion is that, that we have the owner of the property hire a building inspector, home inspector, that would then look for the health and safety issues and present that. It would be just between the homeowner and that building inspector, and the city doesn't get involved in that. And then, that would be given to the ombudsman, and she could take that as her, the document that she needs. It takes the liability off of her. And I brought that up to her, and she was happy with that. She said, yes, she'd be willing to go forward with it because she was talking about resigning, you know, being an attorney. She knows the liability problems. I would also hope that in this process of people getting their units, I guess it's legal non-conforming, which in effect means that, among other things, I guess, but the main thing is if the, if the building, if the unit were to get burned down or destroyed in some way, then they would have to build it back in a conforming standard. But I would hope that the fees that are put on these people, I realize there's staff time concerns involved, but I would hope that the fees would be gentle. Many of these people, as you know, have these second units because they need it for their mortgage. And so, I'm just hoping that we will be gentle in the fee structure that we put on them.
I'm not, what do you mean by that?
Well, you know, they, they, I guess they have to get permits, and they have to pay enough they're going to have to pay, bring it up to health and safety standards. And I understand just to go before the building appeals board's $500. They may not have to come before us, but, you know, there always seems to be city's fees involved, and I'm just hoping that they'll be easy with these folks. People that I know that are in this situation, you know, that's a problem for them. Thank you.
So, I'll just answer that. So, you know, we talked about this before. I think we might have talked about it during the building appeals board, Sherri, but it was, there's no cost to coming in and applying to this program. You know, the idea is this is a carrot, not a stick. You know, we're encouraging people to come in, make their units legal non-conforming, that the, um, one of the, the things that the, and I can't remember if it was you or the building appeals board said was... or the building appeals board said was, originally it said, um, uh, you know, if you didn't participate in this program and it terminated you, you'd be subject to all these fines and fees and penalties. And so there was some modification. It says, um, the program is operative for a limited time only. This is on page one of 20 and after the end of this program, unpermitted second dwellings will be subject to all ordinances in effect, including but not limited to all permit fees, billing, blah, 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 blah. It may be assessed penalties as established by the city council. So we changed that word to "may" in there and "may be assessed." So the idea was encourage people to come through the program and when it terminates, that's when you get assessed the big, the big penalty, okay? So come in now because, and obviously we wouldn't have put all this time and effort to the program and then made it cost prohibitive. But as Dale's saying, you know, um, you know, if you got into code interpretations or an appeal process, there is a fee to that. That's a little, a bit, I don't know that that was addressed because that's, that's kind of an outlier. You know, that's sort of, we hope that most of them are coming through the ombudsman process and that we've made, I'm sorry, we've made this process user-friendly enough that, you know, we're not, we're not burning people with code interpretations that are just, I mean, that's kind of counterintuitive to the whole process, which was trying to open the doors and make it user-friendly and more transparent. So that's the, kind of the fees in a nutshell. It's after the program terminates when it becomes the stick.
Can you clarify for the public's sake when the termination date is on this program? It's almost assumed that it's running with the housing element, the 21, because there is no specific date in this.
I think that we removed the dates because I think the idea was to not have to keep on continuing to come back as, this program took a while. I mean, we've been working on it, you know, eight, nine months now. So, you know, you guys can, what?
It did expire June 30th of this year, but they, but they agreed to extend it for two years from that date. And then again, two years from that date, if the city council decided they wanted to.
Right.
That's right. That's right.
So I think that, that.
It's fluid.
It's fluid and that's kind of where we are with it.
Okay.
Mac? And then I have a question in, so is that, is this, is my reading of this correct? That the cutoff date for eligible units is January 1st, 2006? Is, is that, I'm looking at page 420, properties, or is?
No. They can still apply, they just have to meet current code if you're after 2006.
So you could have built the unit yesterday and still be, okay.
Right, but the.
Does that mean that you could only build a 640 square foot unit if your unit was built after 2006?
No.
This is the compliance program, not a new building.
Okay, to answer your question, the modified zoning would still apply to an illegal unit regardless of when it's built.
Okay.
But that's the planning side. The building side would be, there are no provisions for you to get out of any code requirements. So if you're, if you do something after 2006, you need to bring that unit up to current code. That's, that's just the way, but you still would be, you still would be able to utilize all those modified zoning.
Thank you. Any more discussion at this point?
I have one. Well, so that begs the question, what's to prevent anybody from building something tomorrow? Because we have no minimum lot size, for instance. So we have no minimum lot size on our requirement. So, so what's to prevent somebody from building something on something that's too small? And then coming back and saying, well, I want to legalize it through this program.
It isn't anything. That's how it was decided. We went through all this process that you, you didn't want to, you didn't want to, um, to, I mean, you're certainly, it's still in the fluid state. You can certainly put something in there, but.
I mean, you don't really want to be rewarding people for past a certain point. Do we, from, I mean, at some point, there seems like there has to be some cutoff to prevent scofflaws.
I believe we talked about having a cutoff date at the point of the city council approval. That's what we did.
So you want that added in?
Yes.
Okay, so where am I adding that into the, into? Under eligible dwelling, then I'm going to add it in there, shall be accessories, shall blah, blah, blah. And then number four is going to say, shall have been constructed prior to, shall be constructed prior to.
City council approval.
Um, the effective date of this ordinance? Okay.
Summarizes it well. And then are we also going to change the must to "may" or are we just going to strike that? I liked your suggestion, the "may" with the either separate or common. Looks good to me, otherwise.
Okay.
Right, okay. Well, I just, go ahead. No, Mac, I'm just, I was going to summarize. Go ahead.
I did have a concern about Dale's point about the omnibus man. As far as having a, the property owner being able to hire a contractor and then to pass those recommendations on to the omnibus man could create a conflict of interest. You know, I mean, there's a lot of contractors out there and, I mean, deed.
I think she was, yeah, she was saying a home inspector.
Because their license is viable at that point.
Okay, all right, then I'm good with that.
So let me just give you a brief overview of this. So the concern was that our current ombudsman is an attorney and by her professional ethics, if she finds out about something that is substantial or substandard housing or something that is a fire hazard or something, she's duty-bound, there's an issue there. She's also not qualified, as our previous one was, as a contractor, to really be able to go out and assess the units on her own, okay? So that question came up when, when, oh, there she is. And, and so the idea, you know, as I tried to point out and Dale did too that night to her, that, you know, the ombudsman is really a facilitator. It's, it's, it's a, keeps the person at arms length from us because they're worried about coming to us and then having to go through a baitment and penalties and citations and things of that nature. So the ombudsman is really helping her through the program and shouldn't really necessarily to have those professional qualifications to say, well, what is a two-by-four and what kind of, you know, methodology and et cetera, construction? So the idea is, is anyone else does, when you buy a house, you know, you hire a home inspector because you're not qualified when you buy a house to know what is and what's not. So you, so you, you know, and as Dale, I think, said that night, you know, there are a couple hundred dollars to have someone come in and then look for the red flags and what you really think is an issue here and that, you know. And then that document, then that goes to the ombudsman and then she, then she comes in as that, you know, at arms length, you know, here's this person, goes to this person. Then this person takes it in and discusses that document with the building official. And then that feedback goes back to the ombudsman, then goes back to that person. So that person, we never know who that person is. And that's really what that's intended to do. She's just a facilitator and someone who helps someone understand the process and understand what those documents do and don't do and what the cost associated with those. So she's kind of like, yeah, I guess a facilitator, I guess they say. So, so kind of then put it at ease that she's not supposed to be the end-all helping someone understand, you know, construction methodologies, but she's there to provide a firewall between us and the applicant.
I think the introduction of the building inspector is the perfect solution that brings it all together. You need that expertise on one hand to, you know.
But we all know that home inspectors are relatively inexpensive. People use them every day in their transactions.
Time, you can get your call and.
Really, this person is just trying to get enough information to, to, one, get a cost analysis to say, okay, what are the things I need to do and how much is it going to cost me? And is it worth my while to go through this program for the benefit I get out of it? And that's really their decision.
Great, okay. I guess I need to close the public comment time, so we'll do that. Do we need a motion? No, we don't. I asked you that last time, didn't I? At this point then, I guess we're ready to, now, this is a resolution that we're making to the city council. Does that require a motion on our part to?
Oh, yes, this is, this is the formal deal now, so we're.
Formal deal.
You should be looking on page one of five and your recommendations is, oh, and let me make this correct. We're not adopting, accepting the secret exemption. I'm sorry, that's my fault there. We're just going to be adopting the PC resolution approving, oh, wait, I'm on the wrong one, aren't I?
One of five?
I'm on the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Twenty, twenty?
No, um, yeah, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong page. Turned too many pages. So you're just going to.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're going to go through and.
Make our motion with the.
Recommending the city council adopt TA 1304 and accept the associated secret determination. And you're going to ask me to modify those few things in the program.
Did we note those few things at this point?
This "may" on.
Okay, let's, let's address those. What are they?
Effective date of the ordinance.
Effective date of ordinance, one.
And may have common or separate service connection.
That's it.
That's it, right? Those two?
And home inspector.
And the home inspection, or is that already adopted by?
We actually didn't put that in the program. We just, we just put the, I mean, you can.
I mean, you can just adopt that, right, as a function of your responsibility.
I guess probably what.
Need that in there.
I think what probably you need to do is direct staff to, once this goes forward, to come back with maybe, maybe I need to do some, is there ombudsman guidelines already? I think maybe that's what the next stage would be, would be to, you know, adopt. You know, obviously, we're going to be going through some ombudsmen's. You know, no one's going to do this indefinitely as their job duties. So probably what I need to do, the next step is just, you know, have an on, sort of a description of the ombudsman duties. I mean, she didn't know when she accepted this, it was very vague. So that's probably the next thing. After this gets adopted by city council, then I'll do the ombudsman duties and include the home inspection, you know.
So we don't need to address that this evening then?
I don't think so.
Bring it back to us after the.
Yeah, I think I'll do it afterwards.
Okay. So I need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment, TA 1304, to the ordinance of the city council to the city of Ojai, California, amending the city's second dwelling compliance program guidelines, version three, dated November 19th, 2014, related to the implementation of the second dwelling unit compliance program of the 2014-2021 housing element of the Ojai general plan with a few modifications. One, in, let's see where that is. In, on page three of 20, letter I, where it says utility services, all utilities, including gas, electric, water and sewer, serving the compliance units may have common ser, may have common service connections with primary dwelling. Is that what you want to say?
May have common or separate.
Common or separate service connections with the primary dwelling. Okay, and then the other one is the time restriction, and I don't know where we put that.
Under eligible dwellings on page one, where it says, shall meet the following criteria. We're going to put number four, shall be constructed prior to the effective.
Date passed by the city council.
Right. Well, I want to say effective date of this ordinance.
Okay, right.
Second dwelling? Are you done?
I'm done.
I'll make a second, that we adopt the motion.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Legowski?
Aye.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Moving on. Congratulations. Yes, I just want to say appreciation to the building appeals board for doing such a great job and the staff simplifying a really complex issue, so.
Thank you.
Well deserved, huh? Okay, our next item of discussion is director's decisions. Kathleen, did you want to speak on that? Are there any questions?
Let's see, we just have mostly signs and one deed restriction for the, a new second unit. So there's our deed restrictions that everybody's been asking about for a period of time. We have one abandoned property registration and a couple of director's exemptions. So those are always interesting for the folks out there, so let's talk about that. The first one, which is at 601 North Montgomery Street, was to construct a sound wall around some mechanical equipment, which has been deemed to be exceeding the noise levels for that particular property. So that was done as a director's exemption, is very minor. It's, it's kind of a baffle type of thing. 616 East Ojai was the Valero gas station and they were, you probably noticed that, some things going on there and it was, they repainted the building, replaced some signs. And they did some 88 upgrades into the ramp that went up into the building and those were all deemed exempt from design review because, you know, they're just really retrofitting and making things compliant. And then the third one is 607 Emily's, Emily's Street and that is the, it is a building that has second floor balconies and they were actually cantilevered into the building and became rotted. And in order to replace them, they had to put posts down to the ground because they could no longer cantilever them off the building. And those posts were outside the, the setback. So they were all compliant with zoning and we allowed them to reconstruct those, but with posts going down. Is it cost prohibitive? I mean, they were very rotted, you know, so.
Safety took priority in this.
So, again, it's people trying to do things and maintain their building and without really changing the design or doing anything, a change of use. So we felt that that was qualified for a director's exemption. And then the rest of them are temporary uses. The Rancho Inn is one of the ones that makes, avails itself as a temporary use permit and they will be doing in December their pop-up Christmas thing that they did last year. And as you know, they do have a bar there now and that they're very aware of making sure that they're compliant with that. So that's not a concern or shouldn't be a concern. They've agreed to not. So the people won't be able to get like a drink and stroll through. You have to drink the drink inside the bar if that was any concerns. They're also aware of the acoustical, you know, the noise levels. They, we receive complaints often about noise at that location because of the mixed-use kind of type neighborhood. So, but they were, they're, they're very creative and they do a lot of great things at that motel and, and so this is one event that was very successful for them last year. And as, I guess you guys know how this works, the motel rooms are taken up with arts and crafts things and a person goes from room to room to room. So that's very creative. So that's that one. And then the other one was the launch at 7:30 East Ojai, which is in the field. And I guess that was, is that, is that the one we were talking about today?
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was, so I just had somebody send me a New York Times article, this place in Ojai. Did you see that? I just think it's.
For the first time.
I just think it's funny that, you know, people now know I live here and so they'll send me, Ojai ends up in the newspaper all the time somehow. Very interesting anyhow. Yes, they call us, what did they call us? A hippie what? Something, yeah. So that tidbit of information anyhow. So then moving on, I'll go to the.
Can I have a question, one quick question? Do we have any sort of regulation on commercial properties pruning street trees? Do you know what I'm talking about?
They, are you talking about Valero?
Yeah.
They're not street trees. They're, they're theirs.
They're theirs, okay, well, anyway, okay.
But they did get a, they did, they did get a, we got a complaint and they did, they did come in and get a tree permit.
Okay, and they did a terrible thing to those trees, but.
We're trying to educate people. We're working, just so that you know, I'm working with the tree, the tree committee, I don't know if you guys sit on that, and we're working to update all our handouts. we're working to update all our handouts, and, and you'll probably see this soon, I'm sure it will come here, trying to get the word out to people about, we still struggle with people not understanding, they can't stage underneath oak trees, they can't, you know, I mean, it's really a problem, if you talk about the second unit, people's understanding of what they can and cannot do with the protected trees in Ojai is, is even more a challenge for us. So, we're constantly having to remind people what they can and cannot do, and when they need an ARBRIS report, so it's a day-to-day challenge for us. That said, moving on to the code enforcement, I'm, I think you can see that we're, we're making headway on our code enforcement cases, we continue to receive them, though, at the same time they move off the list, we get more, but I think that we have, we're getting, and as you know, we've been authorized to get a 30-hour a week code enforcement officer now, that will be doing proactive code enforcement, and, and we're hoping that their work hours will include the hours that we are not here. So, we will no longer having, be having things done on the weekend because staff is not here, so that's one of the things that this code enforcement officer will be tasked with doing.
Is this the wall height at 1105 North Signal?
Where?
Under wall height, North Signal, closed case, 11-6. That's ongoing, isn't it?
Yeah, we don't identify.
Right.
Sorry. But, as, as far as 1105 is concerned, they have had a permit issued for their wall/fence, retaining wall, and it is, the design that they've submitted is compliant now. And then, and then the next is the upcoming agenda's on December 3rd, these are what we have going, and it is going to be a long night, and I will just say that some of these people, most everyone is, is very anxious to move forward, I, I'm not sure why it's so busy this time of year, but I will just note that this, the skate park lighting has been around for many months, and it's just been kind of one thing after another, and we're really trying to move it forward to you, so that they can complete that. And then, the Ojai Valley Inn, they are scheduling, as you can see, main lobby pool area, so that is, they have tentatively scheduled these, a intense, a shutdown and an intense remodel period in the first part of January, so it's kind of imperative that we get this on your agenda sooner than later, we don't really even still quite have everything we need, but we're agendizing it and hoping it, it follows with everything, because otherwise, we can't make their, their deadline. So, just letting you know that there is a little bit of push on some of these, and we hope you understand, when we're bringing something to you, it might be a little bit of a push to get it through.
It's like a busy schedule coming up. Okay, Councilman Paul Blatz is with us this evening.
Hello, everybody. Good work again tonight, always tough ones, they're never easy. I don't have anything in particular unless you've got any questions for me, other than to say thank you.
Thank you.
Every time I come, I'm impressed, thanks.
Appreciate you hanging out.
If there's no further conversation, let's deem this meeting closed.